...thirteen, which we will table. The, I'll move on to the public portion. Mr. Gleason has put in a card, so, sir, if you're, when you're ready, you have three minutes, please.
I would like to, first, I'm Jim Gleason from East Marys. I'd like to speak briefly on the preserve at East Marys, one of the items on your agenda. Since the preserve is in East Marys, I've been paying some attention to it. And I want to bring one piece, excuse me, one piece of information in particular to you. This matter was referred to the commission on December the fourth, as I understand it from the papers I've looked at, and it is the secret type that's referred to as EAF. However, I have found out by looking at the files in the Town of Brookhaven Planning Division that on December the 10th, the Division Environmental Protection filed a memorandum with respect to the type of action that this is, and concluded that the proposed project is classified as a Type One action, which of course is somewhat different and raises different issues. The writer said that once DEP has received the required information, a coordinated review will begin to establish the lead agency. Now, generally, of course, I'm sure you're all aware, if there is a positive declaration, action can't be taken until the environmental impact statement has in fact been finalized. I would suggest that since it appears that there may indeed be a positive declaration, since this is a Type One action, and that creates a presumption, absent any other evidence, and there isn't any so far, a presumption that there is at least one significant adverse environmental impact, that it would be inappropriate for the board to proceed in acting on this until it has all the information. That is the suggestion I would make to you, to defer until you know the facts. So I do have several copies, not enough for all of you, of the memorandum that I've referred to, and if I may, I will hand those off.
If you'd excuse Mr. Freeling, that'd be great. Appreciate that.
And that was the information I wanted to impart.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Appreciate it. Happy New Year to you. I'll defer our counsel on that issue, and you can, when we get to the matter, we'll discuss whether there's anything we need to do. So, all right. Any other comments? Any, anyone else in the public wish we heard about any of the, any of the items on the agenda today? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Just a brief update for everyone on the chairman's report. As you know, in addition to our regulatory agenda, we have a presentation by Augie Rocktachell and Loretta Fisher on the regarding the county's agriculture and farmland protection plan update, including the results from the farm survey. As you know, all of this will be part of the overall county comprehensive plan that we're working on finalizing this year. We're also going to be in an overview of geothermal energy from Long Island Geo Industry Group, and we'll discuss the draft model of geothermal code that Commissioner John Wieland, with the assistance of Commissioner Mike Kaufman, have worked on with the industry using the Town of Brookhaven's recently adopted geothermal code as a template. We'll also finally have a report of the nominating and rules committee a little way into the meeting. Couple of updates for all of you on some of the activities of the commission since our last meeting. As you know, the sewer infrastructure finance task force hasn't met in the last few months, but now that the new leaders of legislature are empanelled, I've had some conversations with them, and they're eager to get that back on track, so hopefully we'll be getting back into that very shortly. We also hopefully will be some momentum coming out of the Governor's State of the State address, which is happening right now with regard to wastewater, and hopefully we can capitalize on that momentum. With regard to agriculture, which obviously is an important issue for our county and for our planning going forward, obviously we have the presentation today. We look forward to working on some projects in conjunction with the administration that are consistent with the ag plan. Some of the ideas, I know we've discussed, are farms institutions, a young farmers initiative, online farm health resource, and others. And I've also just been asked to work on Senator Laval's working group on growing the farm economy through helping nurture food startup companies, so I'll keep you in the loop on sort of the activities of that, of that working group. But in general, obviously, we look forward to working with the administration on agricultural issues going forward. With regard to professional certification, which is something we've been working on for a while, as you know, we're working on this with ABLI, it's one of their top legislative priorities in Albany. We completed the overview memo for the state legislatures on this, state legislators on this, and Des Ryan, the head of ABLI, is actually up in Albany right now, and is going to be talking this up among the legislators, legislators this week. He's going to work to educate particularly the Long Island lawmakers and someone, some from upstate about this issue based on the work that Commissioner John Finn did, as well as Commissioner Jennifer Casey. As you know, Town of Brookhaven, Town of Huntington, and then I believe several others, once we get into it, other towns will be interested in adopting a pilot program related to professional certification, once we get going. So that needs legislative action in order to be allowed, and that's the next step. On the Suffolk Economic Development Conference that we've been working on a little bit, that, as you'll remember, is a joint effort of the county planning commission and the county IDA. We're working on a rough draft of the agenda with IDA CEO Anthony Benetta. One of the founders of Computer Associates, Russ Arts, has agreed to be our keynote speaker, and we're looking at finalizing a date for that, probably sometime in March, and hoping to finalize the agenda, the time, and all that sometime in the next few weeks, so please keep an eye out, and I'll keep you all informed on that. With regard to the geothermal code, which has been something, as you know, we've been also working on, we have the industry presentation today, we'll discuss the draft model code. What I'd like to do is get additional input this month from some stakeholders, and hopefully have it on the agenda for this commission to consider adopting it as a recommended code to the towns and villages at our, at our February meeting. See if we get those steps accomplished over the next few weeks. With regard to the planning commission itself, we have the nominating committee who will report today, and then we will elect our 2014 officers, adopt our rules, and set our schedule of meetings for the month, excuse me, for the year, at our next month's meeting in February. So please be ready for that. I would have not set the location of the February meeting. I hope we'll be able to do it here in Hop Dog, but we just don't, we've got to figure all that out, once we figure out room availability, et cetera. Lastly, the comprehensive plan, our oversight committee and other members and stakeholders met with the consultants and some of the staff before the holidays. I hope to have another oversight meeting maybe late this month or early next month. We'll coordinate that with Director Lansdale, depending upon the progress that's being made on the county comprehensive plan. As you know, that's one of the key responsibilities of the county planning commission, is to ensure the promulgation and creation of a county comprehensive plan, we're excited to be, you know, finalizing that over the next few months and certainly this year. That's all I have on my report. Any comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll defer to Director Lansdale for the director's report.
Thank you, Chair McQuarrie. Happy New Year to all of you. Look forward to working with each and every one of you this year and in 2014. Just three projects of note that I'd like to point out. One is that we look forward to completing the comprehensive plan this year and working hand in hand with members of the planning commission to do so, finishing the HUD transfer of development rights study. And I want to acknowledge Andy and for his leadership and spearheading that effort, and finishing the agricultural farmland protection plan, and I want to acknowledge Loretta for being the project manager, and for Augie for playing a key role in advancing that effort. So thank you.
Any questions for Director Lansdale? All right. Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item. All right. We have Loretta Fisher from the, who's our chief environmental analyst here with the Division of Planning, also Augie Rocktachell from the Farmlands Administrator, will be providing update on the ag and farmland protection plan. So thank you both for being here, and Loretta.
Good afternoon. Got a little PowerPoint presentation for you. Presentation for you today. We're just going to give you a brief overview of the plan, and Suffolk County received $50,000, a $50,000 grant from New York State Department of Ag and Markets to update our agricultural farmland and agricultural and farmland protection plan. The last plan that the county undertook was in 1996, and the new plan will identify specific strategies to strengthen agriculture in Suffolk County and protect viable farmlands. Suffolk County leads New York State in the value of agricultural crops sold, and the county's purchase of development rights program that was started in the 19, mid-1970s has protected nearly 10,500 acres of farmland to date. Yet, the county is still experiencing a decline in the number of farms, although at a lower rate than the 1970s and 80s. The changes in agriculture in Suffolk County over the past half century have created unique challenges and opportunities, and an updated plan will enable the county to set priorities to support a robust agricultural industry in Suffolk. The plan will identify the county's goals for the agricultural industry as a whole in Suffolk County, and will seek consensus on major issues facing agriculture in Suffolk County through meetings and focus sessions with local farmers, elected and appointed officials, professional staff, stakeholder groups, academics, and other individuals. We will be conducting and have conducted a number of one-on-one interviews with local farmers, and a survey was conducted last year of agricultural producers, and Augie will be giving a presentation of that after I finish my portion of this. The plan will also include mapping and inventorying farmland throughout Suffolk County. That will include both county-town and nonprofit protected land, farmlands, as well as all the remaining unprotected farmland left. We will also be mapping the agricultural district lands throughout the county. The, the plan will identify and map farmlands proposed to be protected. The county's development rights acquisition rating system also will be reevaluated. Factors that will be considered will be parcel size, proximity to other protected farmland and open space, soil types, and agriculture, current agricultural uses, to name a few. There are others. The plan will also provide demographic and economic analyses from the 2013 Census of Agriculture, actually, that should say 2012 Census of Agriculture, that will be coming out in February of 2013, hoping to put that information into our report, and that will include such information as market value of the industry and commodity, and by commodity sector, sectors throughout the county. Average sales per acre of farmland and job figures for farms and the farm industry as a whole. Plan will also include a review of local agricultural plans and statutes. The review, we will be reviewing the 1996 plan recommendations and analyze its successes and shortfalls. We will also be reviewing comprehensive plans and zoning codes within the towns and villages throughout Suffolk County and consider their farm friendliness. The final plan is due in August of this year, and it will identify important farmlands and recommended lands to be preserved for future generations of county residents. We propose to, we will propose specific recommendations for county-town village codes and ordinances in order to promote farming in the county, and it will contain action plan items regarding all levels of government and their policies to strengthen the agricultural industry in Suffolk County. That's it. Augie, if you can pick up, you will start the conversation on the survey that was conducted last year.
Hi, everyone. My name is Augie Rocktachell, the Farmlands Administrator in the Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning. As Loretta indicated, I'm going to be picking up on what was one of our major first steps in developing this, the new agriculture and farmland protection plan, and that was the distribution of a survey to ag producers here in Suffolk County. We began distributing the survey, actually, right around this time last year, at the Agricultural Forum, Border Cultural Forum, Greenhouse Forum. So in person, we did it through our partner organizations, Long Island Farm Bureau, Beconic Land Trust, Cornell Cooperative Extension, through social media, economic development, through all sorts of, all sorts of means, and we actually were able to get 143 responses from the industry as a whole, which is really, really impressive, and I'm very grateful for that level of response, because it gives us a very solid base by which we, as we work through this plan in, in planning, to really come to some concrete conclusions about what the status of the industry is. So again, this is just the overview of how we went about distributing the surveys and collecting those surveys. They were either collected in person, mailed back into the Beconic Land Trust, or they were filled online via an, via an online survey. Here is the geographic coverage. This is where we receive responses from, the 10 towns in Suffolk County. If you could look at the 1996 ag and farmland protection plan, that is the percentage of farmland acres by town, it's Riverhead, South Holt, Southampton, and Brookhaven, pretty closely mirrors, you know, where our responses came from. Our most robust response was in South Holt, but, you know, Riverhead was right up there, and again, Brookhaven and Southampton. So this is just an indicator that we want to be sure that we're getting survey responses from a kind of clear and total geographic picture. Same thing on this next slide. This is looking at the commodity representation. So the blue bar that you're looking at there is the survey response. Those are commodity groups along the Y-axis. The red bar is what the U.S. Census says is the, the percentage of commodity groups in Suffolk County. Thirty-eight percent of our ag production is nursery greenhouse, and 41% of our surveys came from greenhouse, nursery, or Florida cultural operators and so on. So we were satisfied that we were getting a kind of comprehensive look at what our farmers look like, wanted to make sure that we're covering everyone.
Well, you can tell that the grape people apparently have plenty of time filling out surveys, but the equine people, you know, don't play as much time.
Yes.
Or there's coherence.
Yeah, I think it is noticeable that if there is one underrepresented group, it certainly is the equine people. I think that's absolutely the case.
Oh, I would just make a comment. Impressive return on that survey, because 140 responses out of.
It's 585, according to the last census, 585 farmers, and we got 143 survey responses. It's almost exactly 25%, which is excellent.
Terrific. Yeah, and that gives you good statistical analysis, and I think Carl was one who said that farmers are really bad at returning surveys when we had this conversation.
Absolutely. I'm impressed.
I'm not exaggerating. I was really impressed and very excited that we got such an extensive survey response, because we really can come to some concrete conclusions when it's, when it's that robust. So, but looking at our survey results, the median sized acre of the farms that were out there was 14 acres, the average was 59. The largest responded had 1,800 acres. Farm ownership, this is one I specifically listed because it's interesting. The census says about 10% of our farmers here in Suffolk County are rent only. They were underrepresented in our survey. We only had three respondents of the 143, so they only rented their land. So I'd just like to point that out. It does seem to be data missing from our survey. 140 of the 143 either owned all or, or some of their land. So the rent-only crowd seems to have been missed for some reason.
Do we have a sense that we under, this region, for whatever reason, has less rent only, or do we think we're probably on par with that U.S. average of 10%?
I'm sorry, the, that's not a U.S., it's, the source is the U.S. Census. Yeah, sorry, I should make that clear. Yeah, so that's why I'm saying, the U.S. Census says 10% of our farmers are renting only, we only found 2%. So there's a gap there. The, I don't have a median age for the farmers, we didn't want to ask that on a survey, but we did get the median years farming, and I think that's an important statistic, because we find that the people who have been farming here have been farming here a very long time, and they intend to pass it along to their next generations. These are, and those are just some kind of basic statistics about the labor force. Median, median farm had three full-time employees, six part-time, but it went as large as 150 full-time employees and 300 part-time employees, and that's just one operation. But I think it speaks to kind of the economic capabilities of the industry. Agricultural tourism, I, one thing I wanted to, or we wanted to get statistics on with the survey was to tap in to where agricultural tourism's moving in the county. We didn't have a lot of information on this, but it certainly seemed to at least be anecdotally true that a lot more people are resorting to UPEC operations. Seasonal activities, I'm referring to kind of harvest festivals or haunted houses or that sort of thing. On-site tours, talk about educational tours, greenhouse tours, you know, how to make wine exhibitions and that sort of thing, and so on. And what we found is that 64% of all of our survey respondents actually engaged in some form of agricultural tourism. So it really does speak to this changing nation of, changing nature of the industry, where this is becoming a lot more prominent. Actually, I'm just going to go back. It's also interesting, and again, this is of the survey respondents and not of the population at large, but of 44% of the survey respondents had their own farm stand or tasting room as well. Expectations and future plans. So we wanted to get a good sense of whether or not our farmers had rebounded from kind of the, the height of the recessions back in 2008. You know, have they recovered since that? So we asked them, have revenues increased or decreased in the past five years? And then what we found is that 74% say they're either doing the same or better than they have since 2008. Sure, we'd love to see that number to be higher, but that's still a pretty good indicator that the, that the industry is rebounding, considering how, how slowly things were back in 2008, really subject to kind of national trends, but there does seem to be a kind of a good indicator that a lot of them are back on solid footing, at least in their own words. This chart I find to be really interesting, and to some extent exciting. We looked at, we asked farmers if in the next year, five years, or 10 years, if they plan to increase or decrease their farming operation, and overwhelmingly, by a kind of two-to-one and three-to-one margin, they were planning to increase their operation versus decreasing it. So there does seem to be a kind of pervasive sense in the industry of some optimism, that there is room for improvement.
Just a question about what it meant by increase, or whether that was sort of defined as increasing acreage, or increasing like intensity, or how you.
So I suppose the question leaves that somewhat ambiguous, as I, I think that would be, I could read the actual question, see if I have it. Yeah, it just says, please indicate which of the following you plan to do, and within which timeframe. Increase your farming operation within one year, within five years, 10 years, or more. So I suppose.
Is there an interpretation of what that means?
Yeah. I would guess if I were, having been a farmer, if someone asked me that question, how I would interpret it, I would interpret to me increase acreage of operation, but again, that's going to, that's going to be different from person to person.
How do you interpret the last column?
Um, yeah, so in 10 years or more, only one plans to increase, or five, and, you know, there's five that said decrease. It's hard to plan out 10 years or more in advance, and that's why we only even got six responses in that column to begin with. So it's worrisome that, you know, that five individuals indicated that they wanted to, they were planning on decreasing the operation, but that could be due to any number of factors, including, you know, aging out of the, of the profession or so on. So I personally am going to give more weight to those first two columns, I think, just from an, in an industry planning standpoint, you're more to think on a more one-year or five-year timeline, but clearly there, those numbers seem to be switched in the last column, but ultimately that, those are just six respondents, so.
You hit a nail on the head when you said aging out, because I think that's a problem that we have in every industry here on Long Island, where the, the young people are, there's not part of the process. So it's interesting that you have the median age, the median years, again, nobody wants to talk about our age on this panel either, but the, you know, I think that's something that if we can see what the baby boomers, I mean, not the baby boomers, that, that brain drain that we talk about, what segment of them are actually farmers on the island, because that will speak to the third column, and that will say what type of roadmap we're going to be on there.
And I do happen to have the number, the median age, according to the U.S. Census of a Suffolk County farmer, is 55.2 years. So.
Have you found the exact?
Which is actually slightly lower than New York State and the U.S. national averages. So, but the industry as a, as a whole does tend to be an older industry, and the question is always, where will the next generation of farmers be coming from?
Clearly, that's where, I mean, this county has done a great job of preserving land to maintain at least a, you know, somewhat adequate amount of farm space. The question is who farms that land in the future, and I think that's where, obviously, the policy direction and all the work that Loretta's doing, and you guys are doing together, we'll focus on that, and that's, I think, you know, conversations we've had here, as well, is how can we help you guys, Farmer Bureau, and others with that young farmers initiative? And I know some people out there are doing some good things, you know, the Beconic Land Trust and others are innovating and trying new things to see what will work, and that's exciting, but anyway.
And that will be the heart of the work that Loretta does, and her staff, and myself as well. You know, the presentation I'm giving today is merely a snapshot, you know, we're not, at this point, offering prescriptions or solutions, and we hope, you know.
It's an important baseline, so appreciate it.
Correct.
Do we have a farm team, I guess, is the question?
Well played. The next, the next attitude we tended to measure was how concerned farmers were, specifically with their ability to remain profitable. You know, the only way we're going to be, going to be able to continue to have agriculture on Suffolk County is if they believe they can make money doing so. And, you know, this is a more worrisome response here. So we find that 88% of all survey respondents, right, they're very or somewhat concerned about their ability to, to farm profitably. So that, I wish I could say I was surprised by that number. Having grown up as a farmer, we tend to be a pessimistic lot, but I think it's an important number to keep in mind as we design strategies and plans, is that the profitability concern is paramount.
I think it'll be interesting to see, obviously, how that changes over time. That's almost the key metric, right? I mean, it's sort of.
Correct.
How people's attitudes are in one snapshot, you know, like you said, people in this industry may be more pessimistic than others, but, but how they flow over time, particularly once this gets implemented, will be very interesting.
Yeah, let's hope so. And I also put at the bottom there, because I think it's interesting, but I did break down the numbers by specific commodity groups, at least commodity groups where I had large enough sample size to feel confident about it, and then we find actually, you know, the grapes and the vineyard operators were the highest percentage of responses to actually choose very concerned, 83% of them. I looked at the numbers just yesterday, I had 18 vineyard operators answer that question, 15 selected very concerned.
Does this include the tourism?
What do you mean?
With the farmer, the, you know, in the statistics of the farmers, does this include the tourism that's included into it, bringing out the people to their farms and to the vineyards?
This question just asks farmers, any farmer, whether they grow grapes, whether they grow fruits and nuts and berries, whether they're growing corn, potatoes, whether they're growing live or raising livestock, just asking them very generically, how concerned are you about the profit, profitability of your specific business? Some of those people will have agritourism-type things, so we think of kind of the, kind of famous ones, the Harbs, you know, the Hanks that are doing a lot of these things. They're our, they're vegetable growers, but they also do tasting rooms and hayrides and so on, and some of those people answered the survey. So yeah, even embedded in that answer are people doing agritourism who are still concerned, I guess.
How was the, as far as the green industry, the concerns? How, did you get a consensus?
I had those numbers, probably I could dig them up, I don't have them in front of me. I can tell you it's less than, they seem to be more optimistic than other fields, if only because I don't have them as my top three very concerned groups.
I mean, most, most of the greenhouses, we are, we are pretty optimistic. Just, we lead, we lead agriculture in Suffolk County, and some, again, going back to.
And some, again, going back to, a lot of us now, we're looking at going to winter crops in our greenhouses, vegetables and fresh produce and that. So, you know, we, we see a big market there because nobody's filling that up, you know, locally, you know?
Yeah. And again, I don't know off the top of my head what the number is, but they're certainly lower than those other commodity groups, which would indicate that they are definitely more optimistic.
Augie, quick question for you over here. The grape and vineyard operators, do they have a higher capital investment than some of the other farmers?
I don't have that number in front of me. I would, I mean, if you were asking my opinion, almost certainly that would be, that would be the case, yes.
Christian Kelly.
Thanks very much. What are the farms taxed on? Are they taxed on vacant land or taxed, taxed as vacant land without improvements or?
Um, that answer is it depends.
Generally an acre.
Yeah. They need to apply for agricultural assessment rates. And if they are granted those assessment rates, then they're taxed at a much lower rate.
I think the limit is 10,000. If you produce $10,000 or more, you can get that ag extension. And especially in the greenhouse industry, you know, we have all these greenhouses, but they're not taxed unless they're, they're glass. So they're, they're considered temporary structures. So, you know, we have, you know, three different parcels, five acres each parcel, and it's being taxed at maybe four or $500.
And that was just, that just added kind of a typical kind of survey response where there's opportunities for farmers to speak out and, you know, farms like mine work harder every season to earn the same or less than years prior. Was a non-uncommon response. Next one we measured was how concerned are you about, about access to affordable and productive farmlands? One stumbling block we come up against time to time again is the affordability of new lands or to expand an operation or even to retain the land they have. 68% of all survey respondents were very or somewhat concerned about their access to affordable, affordable farmlands. I broke it down by commodity group again. Towards the bottom, you could see that the vegetable growers had the highest proportion of respondents say very concerned. And then that was followed by the nursery greenhouse sod industry.
Can I just comment on the, going back to the, you know, affordability? I, I know it kind of opens a can of worms, but you know, we protect, how many acres of land have we?
We have over 10,000, well, approximately 10,500, correct, Florida?
Yes. The county has acquired 10,500 approximately, but there's approximately another 10,000 acres that have been protected by towns through PDR lands and other kind of protected lands.
Right. Looking at it from the, like the greenhouse industry, protected land for us is basically worthless just because of the, the amount of coverage we can put on it. I mean, you know, we, we just found another piece, we just bought another greenhouse operation, but we looked around, looked at, you know, anywhere from 20 to 60 to 80 acres. And now for a greenhouse operation, which is the number one agriculture commodity in Suffolk County, it wasn't worth buying that land because we could only put on, say, two acres, what is it, you know, 10% coverage or whatever? So I think, you know, as, as the industry changes and as more farmers get into greenhouses, producing in greenhouses and cold frames, they're going to have to take that into account and even the county. And I know Sarah had mentioned, I guess the county is going through a lawsuit right now as far as the coverage and everything. And, you know, as far, as far as public perception is concerned about it, it's hard to up that coverage at this point. But I, I think that if the public could realize, you know, the benefits of greenhouse grown things where we could produce locally, local grown vegetables year round, we can grow them without pesticides, there's no ground runoff, there's no nitrogen loading into the ground, you know, that perception may change. And that's something that I think that we have to consider for the future, especially the way farming is going worldwide. It is going into a greenhouse production and you're going to see more and more of that now as my, you know, myself and, you know, others I've spoken with. We would never sell our development rights for that reason, you know, because it's just, it's going to become worthless as far as greenhouse industry.
So, so policy needs to change just as times are changing. And I think that's one of the good things about updating the plan now. You know, it's been what, 20 years almost since the plan was updated and, you know, obviously changes are, are needed and that's, that's why this is so timely. And then to be able to incorporate that into our comprehensive plan for the county is also, you know, great timing. So, anyway, let's keep moving through the results here. Thanks, Carl.
So here I, here we got into kind of the nitty gritty of, okay, what is it that, that our farmers are having problems with? So we asked them to identify, what are the top five challenges you're facing, your industry is facing, you personally are facing? And what we find is that the top five agricultural challenges cited are high production costs. So that's stuff like the cost of machinery, fertilizers, pesticides. High fuel cost is also embedded in that, the fuel to operate that and to, you know, to fuel their energy production and so on. Availability of farm labor was number three. Property taxes was number four. And extreme weather events, climate change was number five. Going down the line, environmental regulations were cited, prevalence of pests, that being deer, birds, insects, rodents, could even mean kind of, you know, blights that we've seen from time to time. If you're familiar with tomato blights at all, sometimes we're destroyed by them, sometimes we're not. We've lost entire kind of commodity in patients because now we have this impatient blight that pretty much precludes us from selling it entirely. So the access to affordable farmlands, which we discussed previously, land use regulations. So that's why, as Loretta said, we plan to, you know, dive into those town codes, county codes, you know, how do we, how do we come up with farm-friendly land use regulations? Estate taxes, I won't read through all of them, you could read them yourself, but I think what's interesting on the right is that I broke it down by commodity as well, at least in commodities where I had a large enough sample size, because we can't just look at these numbers independent of the context in which they operate. I think it's going to be clear that the challenges cited by the vineyard operator is just going to be different than those challenges cited by nursing greenhouse sod operators or vegetable growers and so on. A lot of them are the same, but a lot of them are different, which we see here. I did the very same thing on the next slide, except broke down those challenges by township. So whether or not you found yourself in Brookhaven or Riverhead or Southampton, how do these challenges differ? I'm going to pick on Southampton here just because theirs differed the most. We see kind of the prevalence of pests jump to number two as an issue in Southampton, whereas it was only cited as kind of the number seven overall. Another one that we see on Southampton that we don't really see anywhere else is estate taxes for reasons I think we can kind of guess, being the value of the property out there. So as we approach, as we move into the next step of this farmland protection plan, I think we need to bear in mind the context in which these challenges are being faced and that we can't, you know, a, one prescription won't solve all problems, you know? The issues in our remaining farms in, say, Smithtown, which I didn't get a lot for the surveys purposes, but they're still going to be different than they're going to be for Southampton, which is going to be even different than, than it's going to be in South Holden and so on. I think this is my last, or second to last slide. This is one of the more encouraging ones because we asked them, specifically, and probably asked them if they're familiar with kind of the county's farmland protection plans, but we also asked them if they, how important they were to the success of their, of their actual farm operation. And I don't have the percentages up there for some reason, but we see a lot, you know, 72, that's, that's more, that's almost exactly half, actually said the farmland protection plan was very important to the success of their personal operation. Now, 35 said it was somewhat important and only kind of marginal numbers, you know, were either ambivalent about it or, you know, unfamiliar with it or so on. So the, our main program, which I would describe as our purchase of development rights program, is very important, at least as it's viewed by our farmers here. Okay, so this is actually my second to last slide. Just wanted to kind of give a very brief, okay, why do farmers even choose to operate here? We really have, you know, rich agricultural soils and a temper climate. We have this access to the world's most lucrative markets, New York City, the Hamptons, and so on. We have a lot of trends that are moving in our favor as far as buying local, where people are willing to pay a premium, whereas they may not have been willing to in the past. We have a public that is generally supportive and vested in agriculture here. We have a lot of academic nonprofit agencies invested in agricultural success. I named them before. We have these new opportunities, I think, in tourism as far as, you know, wine country, which is named one of the top 10 wine destinations in the world by Wine Enthusiast Magazine. We have a lot more opportunities for value-added production, baking potato chips and so on, direct marketing opportunities, sandal and farm stands. This number I, I love and I think is really significant and that's that Suffolk County farmers know what to do with their acreage. I mean, that number to me is astounding. We make $7,249 per acre versus New York State, which only averages $616 an acre. So in putting the pieces together and how we can maintain such a vibrant farming industry in Suffolk County when it's so expensive here, and it is expensive, it's because we are really getting a lot of money from our farming. One of the reasons we're getting so much money from our farming is because we have such diversity of crops and commodities. You know, we talked about all these different things we have. We even have, you know, limited dairy operations, we have mushroom growers, so we have people growing hops now, and we got the greenhouse and the sod. But all this diversity kind of, you know, the point is intended, but it helps us weather storms because when something really bad happens, it doesn't happen evenly across industries. So it's kind of like owning kind of a diverse stock portfolio. And I think that's massively to our, to our benefit. And last, we're going to do a plug here. I think one of the advantages is acknowledgement that agriculture is changing and government policies need to change to react to those things. The farmland protection plan is a major step in that. Also, I think our recent changes to chapter eight address a lot of these needs. When we look at agricultural tourism, the latest round of changes to chapter eight was really, were really set forth to allow some of these direct marketing opportunities, these agritourism opportunities, the onsite processing and so on. And I hope that, you know, any recommendations that come out of our plan are going to be proactive in that manner as well. So this finally is my last one. What's next? We, as Loretta said, we, we just concluded five focus groups held across Long Island with farmers of different stripes to get their suggestions. That is an ongoing process, so even though we don't have another focus group planned right now, that does not mean that I'm not available, Loretta's not available, anyone in the division of planning is not available to reach out, to give feedback to. We're going to continue to reach out to our partners, to advocacy groups and so on. I have my contact information up there, by no means the only contact. And yeah, that's it. I'm not sure if anyone had any other further questions for Emile or Loretta.
Thank you, thank you, Augie, thank you, Loretta. I know we had a bit of a conversation, I know we can move on, but Glenn, as you haven't asked anything, so why don't you?
One of the things that's coming up in Riverhead actually is the idea of energy farming, using the funds. And while right now they're kind of mostly limited to their own production and needs, but there's a lot of talk about being generators and how wind is more compatible, but then when you put solar, it has a much more of an impact on the land. So are those conversations coming up in your discussions or some guidance? Because it seems like it's going to be a difficult issue.
We have been getting a lot of calls with regard to interest in solar panel farms on our PDR lands. And there is somewhat of a conflict. We will be discussing it as part of this plan. But the, the impetus to the acquisition of these lands was for agricultural production. So that is our prime goal, our prime interest is agricultural production. So there is, you know, an inherent possible conflict there, but we will, we will be discussing it as part of our conversations on this.
Mr. Kelly.
You talked a little bit about changes of crops and what the future may bring. There's been limited discussion at the state level with the governor talking about legalizing some forms of marijuana for medicinal purchases. Was that ever brought up in any of these? Obviously a little premature in, in the conversation, but in, in terms of policy, I mean, as you're, you're looking historically, what about setting policy as we're going forward on something like that? Because Colorado's doing it now, they're, they're talking about a boom in tax revenue coming in. What are those policies that Colorado has in place? Do they grow it in Colorado? I don't know anything about it.
I can honestly, this survey just didn't even tap into anything like that. It, it didn't, to be honest.
But what about going forward?
Going forward, if, if the goal is, you know, we look what we did, if we're setting policy going forward, this, this is a hot button issue. I mean, it would seem to me that once we get some guidance from the governor's office about what's even the lab we're growing here, then I guess you treat it like, I mean, I know what Colorado does is that they're going to treat it like other crops, you know, to some degree. So I guess just sort of going to wait and see. But I guess the point is, it certainly is a high dollar value crop.
I think, speaking very hypothetically and way in the future, not, not addressing that crop at all, but if we create an environment where greenhouse operations are friendly or something like that, that would be our pursuit, not a, not a specific crop.
Commissioner Kelly, I haven't even inhaled.
I'm pretty sure you're coughing and then Johnny, do you want to say something? All right, coughing, Finn, and then we'll wrap.
Quickly, there are estate issues and tax issues. If the average age of a farmer is 55, what do you see as the impact of those issues coming up? I mean, right now they are problems. I represent a farmer and we've been discussing how to transfer ownership. And there are a lot, a lot of tax consequences to this, especially the estate tax. Do you see that impacting or what kind of impacts do you see from that?
Well, I think it clearly is an issue. And what's nice is that there are nonprofit organizations that are, that are free and specifically designed to facilitate transfers from one generation of farmers to the next. So FarmNet offers their services free of charge and it is their mission, it is their mission, you know, to ultimately facilitate the passing on. So I'm not an expert personally in the estate tax law. I know it's an issue, we see it's an issue that, that has come up, you know, in our survey. Yeah, I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I think the Conic Land Trust is working on a lot of those issues as well. So it is, it is on the radar of a lot of the advocacy groups. I believe that's going to be, it's primarily a state and federal issue, but not, not solely. But yes, the state taxes are something that has, that has come up.
All right. Christian Finn, then Christian Casey.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. We've heard the inventory level of 10,500 acres, right? Is the amount of acreage that the county's purchased for its protection program. Of that 10,500, how many of those acres are actually being worked as a working farm from an inventory standpoint?
Actually, actually, that's something we're going to be inventorying and looking at, we're looking at the latest aerials. Hopefully they're coming in for 2013 and we'll be assessing that information.
Do you have an idea of 30%, 50%?
We're not, I'd rather not say at this point. We don't have a good hold on how many are actively farmed at this point.
Okay. Yep, okay, very good.
All right, so we'll table that conversation. So the good news is with technology, it's much easier.
Keep an eye on these.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Casey.
Just one quick thing. It has to come up at all with respect to infrastructure and the roadways. Cause I know, I live in Huntington, so a lot of my friends with kids, they don't even want to go out east anymore to go do those echo things like going to these harvest things because you can't move because of the roadways out there are just so stifled. And even on the south, I mean, the problem on South Fork is more during the summer months, but I'm sure that must be a challenge facing farmers, not just with people coming to visit their vineyards or farms, but maybe to get their produce in and out. I don't know if that has become an issue. I mean, it's more than one issue, but I know the roadways out east are just not terribly easy to get around on sometimes, be a lot of volume.
Well, that's, you know, the transportation issue has increased over the last decade tremendously on the north fork, especially during the fall season now. So that is an issue that wasn't brought up by the farmers particularly, but it is, you know, an issue that the local towns, you know, grapple with as well as uses, how, you know, how far the use moves from an agricultural use into a commercial use, et cetera. So those are some of the issues that at least we were aware of.
And, and I, you know, this is something that the Long Island Wine Council brings up a lot. They're highly tuned to the kind of traffic issue because they want visitors out to their vineyards. They make more money with people coming through their doors than they do with any kind of wholesale operation or selling to liquor stores or distributors. wholesale operation or selling to liquor stores or distributors and so on. So they are finely tuned to it. We just ran a very successful kind of Taste North Fork campaign, which you may have heard about, where they're offering a kind of free shuttle loop that was taking people between Greenport and Riverhead with stops at vineyards along the way, stops at Matituck, at the shops, and so on. So the transportation is certainly on the radar. And again, I think it's more important for certain commodities than others, but it has been expressed to us, at least verbally, as an issue.
I think that's a great example of why the new plan is needed, because 20 years ago, when the prior plan was put together, the agrotourism thing wasn't really a thing, right? I mean, we had most farms sold back to supermarkets and other ways, whereas now, there's a lot more of selling at your farm, or the wineries, of course, have grown tremendously. So it's a great example of why this plan is so important and the survey so important. So policy needs to change as times change, and so here we go. So thank you all, Loretta and Augie, for your presentation and time. We look forward to working with you, speaking on behalf of the Commission, we certainly look forward to working with you on certain specific policies that we can help push forward with you, programs, et cetera. So thank you guys for that.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is geothermal. John Reiner is here from the LI-GEO. He's going to give a brief presentation on geothermal energy. Geothermal energy is very different, of course, than the other renewable energies we know about, because we know the sun shines and creates electricity, we know that wind turbines turn and they create electricity. But a new emerging renewable energy source, potentially here on Long Island and growing, is geothermal. And I think a lot of us have no idea how that works or what's involved. So John's here from the industry to give us a brief overview of sort of what's involved, and then a little later, we'll take a look at the draft model code that's been put together and that we'd like to sort of have the Commission consider probably at our next meeting. But this provides the background that'll allow us to do some thinking and work on this issue. So, Mr. Reiner, thank you. I also want to acknowledge again John Whelan and all the work he's done on behalf of the Commission on this, as well as Mike Kaufman a bit too. Thank you, sir, I'm welcome.
Okay, thank you. Glad to be here. And Long Island Geothermal Energy Organization, I'd like to thank the Commission, would like to thank the Commission for inviting us to present here. My name is John Reiner. I'm a founding board member and treasurer of the Long Island Geothermal Energy Organization, where a 501(c)(3) organization started about a year and a half ago. My day job is I'm the director of the Sustainable Energy Group with P.W. Brillic Consulting in Bohemia. So I have a quick presentation here, I'd like to go through it quickly. There's a lot here. If you've never seen a geothermal presentation or are confused by anything, you're in good company. I've been quite a number of years and quite a number of presentations to grasp the technology.
You're going to do it in 10 minutes for us, though.
Right, right. I'm going to do my hour and a half presentation in 10 minutes. But I mean, the one-minute explanation of the geothermal we're talking about here is it's a highly energy-efficient means for indoor space heating and cooling. It's not used to generate electricity, it's not like the hot rock geothermal you hear about in Hawaii or out west or Iceland. It's for heating and cooling a building. It's an all-electric system, so it's an alternative to use heating and not using fossil fuels, get off fossil fuel, get off gas or oil. It's a simple mechanical box, a device, just like a refrigerator or an air conditioner, but reversible, so it can heat a building or cool a building. And the resource that we tap into is the earth. The earth is a tremendous, enormous solar battery. By solar radiation, the temperature of the earth down to, say, 500 feet is maintained at a moderate, stable temperature, and that temperature is about equal to the average outdoor air temperature. Okay, so around here, it's about 55 degrees, 50 to 55 degrees is the ground temperature down to 400, 500, 600 feet. So with that snapshot of an intro, let's just go through it and see how far I get before I get the... They're different. The technology, it's all about coupling the building to the ground. I mean, we're tapping into this earth resource, so how do we do that? We install, we drill and we install pipes or wells into the ground, and we run a circulating fluid, water or groundwater between the building and the ground. And we're just moving heat from the building to the ground in the summer, or we're pulling heat up from the ground to the building in the winter. So water is the messenger of the heat energy. Different types of systems, depending on the geology, whether we use groundwater or whether we're just using the earth. There's closed-loop systems where we just have piping in the ground and we run this city potable water through the pipes, through the ground. The network of piping in the ground versus open systems where we actually pump groundwater up, run it through heat exchanges in the building, and then return the water to the ground. Open, because it's open to the environment, to the ground. Closed systems, they are isolated from the ground. Water circulates through the ground, but does not come in contact with the ground or the aquifers. And we're all very aware on Long Island, aquifers are a cherished resource and a source of drinking water, so we have to do it right to protect that resource. So we have the stuff in the ground, we have the stuff in the building, the geothermal heat pumps and mechanical equipment. Those are the two parts of the systems. So let's go through Slide 3. I mentioned LI-GEO, 30-plus members, just came this morning from our annual, you know, our goals for 2014. We have a lot of good things in the works, so we want to continue to grow, to operate the organization, get more members. You can find some information on the organization at li-geo.org. Okay? Okay, this technology's been around for a long time. David, you mentioned, did you say emerging?
Well, here.
Yeah, okay, emerging in this room. It's been around forever. It's caveman technology. You know, you walk into a cave and when it's really hot out, you're nice and cool. In the wintertime, you walk in there and you're nice and warm. So it's been around forever in Long Island. We've been using the groundwater for cooling buildings for a century. In the '40s, they actually developed the refrigerant cycle, the box, that could make keep hotter cold water with the flip of the switch. And then sometime in late '48, they had the first operated commercial system came into play. Unfortunately, it's only, it's a misunderstood technology. It's largely overshadowed by solar or wind and other conventional systems, so it barely has 2% of the HVAC market, and largely because of misinformation or lack of information. So I'm glad to be here to inform you about the technology. It has a great future, though. It's a solar techno, it could be called a solar technology. The heat energy is from the sun, 50% of the sun's radiation that makes its way through the atmosphere is absorbed by the earth. That's a resource we're tapping into, Kajun. Many, many benefits. I mentioned it's all-electric, it allows you to get off fossil fuel, it's a means to reduce CO2 emissions, it's good for utilities, it allows them to balance the use of their power plants. They can use it in, they can use power plants in the wintertime for heating rather than, you know, handing it over to the fossil fuel industry for heating. It's very energy efficient because you're using the earth at this moderate, stable temperature. It's a lot more efficient than the very energy-intensive air conditioning systems out there. You have a more of a level electrical load over the course of the year, which decreases your operating costs. Very simple systems, low maintenance, many other benefits. We can just go through these kind of quickly, I don't think we have a lot of time, but again, we're just moving, we're just moving heat back and forth from the ground. This is a conventional air-cooled, air-source heat pump. The distinction here is that an air-source heat pump in the wintertime, it takes very, very cold air and has to, through the refrigeration cycle, pull BTUs out of that to warm your house. There's a lot, there's a lot of energy needed to pull heat out of very, very cold water, cold air. At the same time, in the summer, in the heat of the summer, an air-source heat pump will pull out very, very hot air and has to turn that into cold air. So again, there's a lot of energy, there's more energy used by the, the greater the difference in temperature you have to draw. Where you're starting with the earth at that stable temperature, you don't have to use as much energy. That's where you get the energy efficiency of these systems. I'm gonna, that's the standard line diagram, that box in the middle, that's the geothermal heat pump. It's a series of circuits, call it the heat exchange. All the heat exchange happens in that box and in the ground. So you're just moving heat around, you're not generating heat through fossil fuel, and you're using the earth to store the heat. Here's in the cooling cycle, in the summer, you're pulling heat out of, transferring heat from the building into the circulating fluid, the water, sending it down into the earth, and by virtue of the difference in temperature from the warmer water to the cool earth, the water is cooled down in the process and comes back, and that cools your house, it pulls more water, and it just circulates like that. And there's the heating cycle, the opposite occurs. The water gets sent down into the earth, and it's colder than 55 degrees, so it extracts heat, and that heat is then transferred to the building, and then it returns. Different types of systems on Long Island, there are a lot of different ways to couple the building to the ground with pipes or wells, vertically, horizontally. The two bulb ones there, vertically bored, closed-loop system, the well water, open system, those are the more common on Long Island. On the left, this is an open-loop system. On the left, you have the supply well, which actually pulls groundwater out, it pumps down in the well, runs it through the building, heat pump in the building, and then it returns the water to a second well, the return well. Very efficient, direct use of that cold water, especially for cooling. But again, in the wintertime, the heat pump can pull BTUs out of 55-degree water too, boost it up, and deliver 110, 120-degree air to, you know, your diffuser up here. Can you continue, John? I'm not going to go through all this, but some of the considerations with open loop, because you're using groundwater directly, groundwater has minerals in it, it has a low pH, Long Island, if you know Long Island groundwater, that's kind of like on the acidic side. It has iron in it, so there are certain considerations and concerns with respect to water quality when you want to go with an open-loop system. Because of that, you could have iron buildup on your pumps, on your wells, and you may have to clean those, routinely have to clean those.
And a lot of cesspools, too.
DEC permits are required for certain systems that pump over 45 gallons per minute. Can you continue, John? And we'll go onto the vertical closed-loop. I have a lot more pictures of the vertical closed-loop, how these are installed, because they're probably all familiar with water wells, but not so much with the closed-loop systems. Let's see, what can I say about the closed-loop? It takes less energy to circulate the water in a closed-loop system than a open-loop system. However, it takes quite a bit more drilling and installing these pipes. They're less efficient from that perspective. Pipes will last forever, 50-plus years. Geothermal heat pumps in general have a longer mean life cycle than other mechanical equipment, on the order of 20 to 25 years, because they're not subject to the extreme temperature and operating conditions as conventional equipment. So, let's see, you can continue on, show some pictures. There's one, there's a drill rig. You can use the same drill rig to install open loop wells, so. Those are the plastic pipes. You can go back, John, it's the role of that plastic pipe going into the ground at speeds 500 feet, that's installed in a drilled bore hole, is basically a loop of pipe. Once it goes down to depth, you send down a treming pipe to the very bottom, and you pump up and fill the remaining space around the bore hole wall and the black pipes with the thermal ground. You basically seal off the annulus, that space between the bore hole wall and the pipes with the thermal ground. Okay? That's how they come from the factory. You can also put closed-loop systems in horizontally, you can trench them in as straight runs of pipe. Like you see there, supplying a return pipe there in a trench about four feet deep. Or you can put them in, in this configuration, it's called a slinky configuration, you just get a lot more surface area contact with the earth with this configuration. And again, it's all about moving heat energy from the water that's circulating in the piping to the earth. Okay, some environmental considerations, which I'm showing is one slide, which, you know, we can, starting with dialogue here, with some of the concerns that people have about the systems. Environmental concerns can be mitigated, there's the concern about some closed-loop systems use a food-grade, non-toxic antifreeze solution in the water, propylene glycol, some methanol and ethanol, alcohol-based antifreezes. Let's see, grounding of the holes after installation, after installation. I don't know, do you want me to go through that? That's a whole discussion in its own right.
Yeah, I think what is helpful with the Commission is just to understand just sort of how it works, because if we're looking at a model code, you know, and just for the Commission members to put this in context, I mean, we came up with a solar model code, you know, and that was adopted by the towns, and now it actually is the state model throughout the state that we started a couple of years ago. Then we had the wind code, and we all sort of had a sense of how wind worked. But for geothermal, as we're coming up with our geothermal code, or a model code that we can share with the towns, just wanted to make sure that the Commission members had a basic understanding of what geothermal was and how it basically operated at a high level. So I think this has been very helpful. Let me see if there's any questions anyone has about what they've seen or any particular concerns. Yeah, close, and then John.
I was reading lately that there's a new system where you're putting the pipes right under the foundation of buildings. Do you have any experience or what, disadvantage or disadvantage?
Oh, there's a lot, there's a lot of different, I don't know if you mean radiant heating, where you actually put piping in the floor?
No, in geothermal, but they're putting it under the building.
There's a lot of different things. We work to put, to put piping in piles, in building piles in the city. You can lay them under the foundation of the building. Wherever you're going to have cool earth, you could put these pipes in contact with. Geothermal systems suffer from a higher premium because of the drilling costs, they're more expensive. So where you can reduce that premium by putting them under a building where it doesn't cost a lot to lay out plastic pipe, or put them in a structural pile before they fill it up with concrete, because the pile has to be drilled anyway, so you overcome those drilling costs, you can still use that for heat rejection. But there are a lot of different options like that that have been explored.
Commissioner Finn, and then Mr. Gabriel.
Yeah, thanks for coming in today, John. I have some experience in this type of cooling, per se, not so much on the heating aspect, but from an operator of commercial office buildings, this type of cooling has proved to be the most efficient. But when we build a new building, it's never a variable in the engineering design of a building, of a new building. This is, we have these applications in assets that are older than 40 years old, and because of the regulatory issues with the DEC, to be able to drill a well, and I think that becomes problematic to get to the depths that you need to go to, which is, you know, 600, 700 feet to get to that 50-degree water temperature, which is the basis of where you can get your efficiencies from operations. So have you had some success in Long Island in the last, say, five years of projects that have gone to that supply dispersion well scenario that you have here, where that you can point to as a model? And I think that's the issue, is that there's, it's hard to get traction from an operator who's the most efficient, but getting buy-in from an engineering and municipality to say that we're going to drill down 600 feet into Long Island to get water and disperse it, even though, you know, we have existing systems that have no environmental impact. But I think it's just that perception that with the sole-source aquifer, that, you know, I don't know how much traction that's been able to get.
Yeah. You don't have to go down to 600 feet to hit that temperature, I mean, as soon as you, as soon as you go 10, 15 feet, if you're in groundwater, you're in those great conditions.
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, we find that we, we have supply wells that are, that are pretty deep, I, I, I'm not, they're definitely more than 15 feet, maybe, they're in the hundreds of feet down. And then, it is an issue getting the, uh, the, the well temperature to, uh, because then you, like you said, the less energy you have to apply to that water to get it to offer, run through your fan units, um, but you have to go lower. The lower you go, the, the colder the water temperature.
You shouldn't have to, really, as soon as you get into the water table, except maybe along the shoreline, where, where the water's shallow and it's, it's, it's influenced by atmospheric temperatures, but, um, otherwise, as soon as you're into the water table, you should be into the 55-degree water. But as far as examples, um, yeah, it's really a perception thing, because, um, really, all we do right, all I do right now is geothermal systems, and most of them are open-loop systems. Um, we are in the process of installing a system at the, um, Amneal Pharmaceuticals plant, their expanded plant in Delport, I guess it is. Um, they're gonna do all their space cooling with, and if you've been out there on Horse Block Road, it's, it's an enormous expansion.
Yeah, I think that's Geopank, right, uh, station in Horse Block, yeah?
Correct. And they're using geothermal to cool that entire building. Uh, we're in the process of designing, we just finished designing a system for New York Institute of Technology, building seven new buildings, including four dorms, which is all gonna be open-loop system, heating and cooling.
Oh, excellent.
So it's really, um, you know, knowing, members of the design team who are familiar with the technology, and are, and having an owner who's interested in it, wants to be a champion, and then contacting engineers who know, and, and know the DEC, we work with the DEC, the Suffolk County Water Authority, all the, all the time, to prove that, that our approach is upfront, due diligence is very important, are there public drinking water supplies around, what are the environmental conditions, and designing it right, and working with the agencies.
And, and I think that's why this code is so important, because right now, it's fairly unregulated, but the towns, as it starts growing in usage, like major projects like the Amneal project, the towns may start trying to regulate this, and we wanna make sure that they regulate in a way that's, you know, supportive, and not going 15 different directions, and, you know, and that's why we asked the industry to work with us in drafting that model code. It works for the industry, obviously, we need to make sure it works on the, on the environmental side as well, but, um, this is where we should start, and that's why the role this commission plays, is try to get that kind of regulation standardized across the towns, before they start going 15 different directions on their own. So that's why we're excited to work with you, and happy to help in the emergence of this important industry, you know, here on Long Island. I know, Carl, you wanna say something?
Yeah, real, yes, I, it, it appears that the, the open system, uh, is that the most economical, uh, way of, uh, setting a system up?
It's the most expensive and the most, um, efficient in terms of correctly accessing those hot, those temperatures.
Right.
Yeah?
All right, well, Nick, and then, it's good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, just a quick question, you mentioned discharge into sewer systems. Most of the properties on the East End, and I suspect all of Long Island have, um, onsite wastewater, in other words, a sanitary system. Are you suggesting that these systems then get discharged into?
No.
So I don't understand what that is. What you're saying under improper discharge?
That's, that's, um, that's, right, that's improper discharge into...
So where people are currently hooking up into those systems?
Uh, you know, it's, it's probably a rarity that someone discharges into a sewer system. Um, yeah, that bullet, I should believe that.
So on a residential, even the program that you discussed on Horse Black Road?
That's going back into Africa.
This wastewater goes back into Africa.
The wastewater has nothing to do with the geothermal.
So it goes into a completely separate water collection or dispersing process?
It goes back, it comes out of a well, and it goes back down to the well or something, to the wastewater. So does the water being pumped up, or is the system being pumped out?
If there's an onsite wastewater, wastewater system with, with dry, with, with a seepage field, that has to be, you have to separate your geothermal system, and that's something...
And that's where, and that's where code can come in about what's required in terms of those separations, and that's why, I guess, is there will be code that is required, which is why we wanna get ahead of it, is to try to identify that. Let us, and then we're gonna wrap up, because we really gotta move on, so.
Um, I know Shelter Island doesn't allow them because they're afraid of penetrating the clay layer, so are there any suggestions of where geothermal is not appropriate?
That's, that's, I'm also a geologist, and I'm very aware of geology of Long Island, so, um, areas like that, I can understand why the municipality is concerned about puncturing the clay layers, because they may separate fresh water from salt water. So I would, in certain areas, like that Shelter Island, the east, the east end, the ports, there are certain areas where there are clay layers that I might be concerned. Places like Great Neck Peninsula, the conincular, that get their water from, um, very limited aquifers, that are surrounded by salt water, they don't like, they're very stressed aquifers, same thing with the Eastern North Port. Um, you know, you don't wanna mess around with the water there, so you, you really have to be careful how you apply these techniques. These can, they can coexist, geothermal systems can coexist with water supply systems, but, um, I understand that they're more concerned, be careful about that, you sort of...
All right. Um, thank you, John, so much for being here, for that, that overview and some of this discussion. So our plan is to, uh, well, we'll, at the end of this meeting, split for a few minutes, in fact, John Whelan will just walk everyone through the draft, uh, model code, it'll probably just take five, 10 minutes to do that. And then we wanna get some more feedback, if anyone around the table has more feedback, as well as from some outside folks, and then come back and meet with Del IGO, try to finalize this, it's something we go out to the towns with, hopefully, I think, in February, you know, at our next meeting, which is only four weeks away. So that would be our goal. Um, but thank you very much for being here, and appreciate your time and all the work you've done.
I'll sit here and listen.
Yeah, please, feel free, we have a couple of administrative items we need to get through, that we'll get to first, so. All right, let's move on to the administrative agenda. Um, first item is the Preserve at East Mariches. Um, I guess I would just ask counsel if there's anything, any perspective he had on, whether there's anything we need to do differently.
Quick answer, and then we sign for the detailed answer, for Michael.
Okay.
Uh, first, where is statuteually required to go 45 days from when we get a complete referral?
Use the mic.
Because where statuteually required to go 45 days from when we get a re, uh, complete referral? The referral that came in included the assessment form, which satisfies our obligation to go ahead, we're only making you, again, Michael, is it's advisory, what we're saying, and ultimately, the, uh, determination on sequence is gonna be made to the town.
Certainly, the town cannot move forward until they have that, under their county and state law, we, we can or are supposed to move forward.
That's correct.
Any questions anyone has on that? Okay. That, with that, I guess we'll go on to Andy and the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the first, uh, regulatory matter before the commission is the referral of the Preserve at East Mariches. This is referred to us from the town of Brookhaven. Jurisdiction for the commission is that the subject property is adjacent to Montalk Highway, New York State Route 27A, um, as well as being within one mile of an airport, that would be the adjacent Sodaro Airport. Uh, also, the subject property is, um, within 500 feet of Suffolk County land. The applicants are seeking site plan approval from the Town of Brookhaven Planning Board for the development of a 70-unit retirement community. The subject parcel is 22.32, I'm sorry, the subject parcel is a 22.32-acre parcel, zone-planned retirement community, located on the north side of Montalk Highway, uh, in the hamlet of East Mariches. The Preserve at East Mariches Retirement Community is proposed to utilize a conservation design, deserved to preserve existing wetlands located on-site, and proposes an open-space buffer along its western boundary. Ten six-unit buildings and two five-unit buildings are intended to be constructed with access provided by Loop Roadway from Montalk Highway. A 1,200-square-foot community building is proposed, including a swimming pool and common area. The project proposes landscaping, parking facilities, and utilities, as well as a freestanding ground sign. A homeowners association is intended to be created to manage common areas, including roads, sanitary, and stormwater systems. Uh, if I could, I'd just like to go through the, uh, the slides that we have. First slide here is an aerial view of the subject property, uh, on top of the tax map, um, breakup of the, of the area. And you can see, uh, the subject property, this is a close-up view, this is the subject property here. This is not working. All right. Yes?
It's on TV, but it won't.
Yeah. Okay, well, for some reason, it's not going. The subject property is center of the slide, you can see is the wooded portion, um, of the slide there in the middle, um, defined by the red boundary. There is a roadway, a dirt roadway that bisects the property, and then you can see there, so now we know the property. To the west of the subject property is the airport. Uh, to the east of the subject property is a, uh, commercial land use, which is, um, stabling horses, if you will. Um, you can see some of the land use pattern in the area, predominantly, a lot of open area, uh, there is some residential uses to the south, and there is some commercial uses along the road. Next slide. This is an oblique view of the, of the subject property, looking from the south-north, and again, you can see the land use is identified. Next slide. Okay, this is a, a view of the subject property, showing the wetlands, uh, the regulated wetlands as mapped by New York State DEC, uh, on their wetland maps, and you can see the, uh, the subject property is, uh, has a piece of the wetlands on the northeast corner. Next slide. Um, this is the zoning of the, of the area, the subject property is, uh, the center of the slide, it's zone PRC, Planned Residential Community. You can see, uh, the typical, uh, pattern of zoning in the area is predominated by A1 residents. However, along Montalk Highway, you can see the J2 commercial zoning, uh, that is a corridor along the roadway, uh, as well as on the other side of the, um, that north-south road to the west. That's, uh, that's County Road 51. You can see that there's, uh, planned retirement, uh, community zoning, as well as NH, NH, which is a nursing home hospital zoning. Next slide. Uh, a quick, um, slide showing the Suffolk County bus routes, um, the subject property is identified in red with the star. You can see that there's, uh, one line that runs along Montalk Highway, which makes connections to, uh, other points northwest and, uh, and east. Uh, this is the location of the subject property in the, uh, East Mariches School District. Next slide. This is the site plan, we can go back to this if, if need be, you can see the subject property is clustered towards the center-right of the, of the parcel. The proposed sewage treatment plant is at the bottom southwest corner of the subject property. You can see the, in gray, uh, tailing to Montalk Highway is the proposed emergency access. Uh, the upper right-hand corner shows the, um, identified wetland line, if you will, and 100-foot setback. Next slide. So staffers out in the field, uh, this is a shot of the sign of the adjacent, uh, what is commonly known as Sodaro Airport. I would imagine, if you're a, a local person, you would, uh, refer to the airport by the sign, uh, that is on the roadway, that's Montalk Highway, looking east, and the sign says Luftker Airport. Next slide. This is a, a view of, um, one of the airstrips, uh, to the west, or part of the airport property. Next slide, John, that's looking north, by the way. This is the, uh, airport strip itself, you can just see the strip running off the left side of the, left side of the slide, um, decor and, and the photograph is taken on a access road, or, I don't wanna say taxi road, but an access road along the side of the airport airstrip. Next slide. This is a view, uh, from the air, uh, property, airport property, looking east, uh, looking west, I'm sorry, and there's a small commercial, um, uh, strip center there, the only, um, food establishment in there is a, uh, I'll call it a fast-food Mexican, uh, takeout restaurant. Next slide. Uh, this is looking a little bit, um, east, down Montalk Highway, from the airport property, you can see, uh, the scattering of, um, low-intensity, uh, commercial uses. Next slide. Uh, looking straight down, uh, Montalk Highway, that's heading east, heading east down, uh, Montalk Highway, you can see the character of the road, of the state roadway there. Uh, and then looking back the other way, looking west down Montalk Highway. Next slide. Okay, um, this is, um, in the center of the subject property, you can see the typical vegetation, this is from the, uh, dirt slash gravel road that bisects the property, um, nothing too spectacular here. When we did our site inspection, as you can see earlier today, uh, we startled two, uh, red, uh, thin hawks that were just in the area, and they, uh, they were hesitant to leave, so they must be nesting in the area. Uh, just point of, uh, point of note. Uh, another, uh, shot of the, uh, airport grounds, is this the airport ground? Oh, I'm sorry, this is the adjacent, um, horse, um, horse, uh, property, uh, to the east of the, um, uh, subject property. Uh, there's another, uh, piece of it, to the, to the left of this slide are the wetlands, you can see the ground is sloping away, uh, that's, uh, the horse-stabbing property, and, um, so that is the wetland at the northeast corner. I, I should say, go back, yes, stay on the wetland. The wetland is, um, a recharge basin, uh, from, taking stormwater runoff from Montalk Highway, it is, uh, not highly maintained, and it's in a, uh, relatively natural state.
It's definitely artificial?
It is a created wetland, yeah. Uh, that is not to say that the recharge basin wasn't created in low groundwater, which was in tributary area, but the wetland and the, the wetland area is mapped by New York State DEC. Okay, so that's it. Okay, so those are the slides, we can go back to any of those if, if the commission would like. Stormwater runoff from the Contemplated Preserves of East Mariches development is proposed to be collected and recharged to groundwater via proposed drywells and a retention pond. Uh, wastewater from the proposed retirement community is intended to be treated by a proposed chromaglass sewage treatment plant, in performance with Suffolk County Department of Health Services standards, uh, as well as Department of Public Works. Access for the proposed retirement community is to be from an unrestricted, non-signalized ingress egress to New York State Route 27A. Emergency access is proposed to, uh, the highway at the western side of the building complex, as I noted before on the slides. The subject site is presently undeveloped and primarily wooded. Uh, the existing natural vegetation of the subject site is characterized as pine oak forest, as mentioned. Similar woodland exists on lands in the area, as noted on the slides. A paved roadway from the adjacent use to the west bisects the property midway, and connects the uses to the east, uh, and as also noted, a private airport is adjacent, uh, to the west of the subject property. Development site is adjacent to Montalk Highway to the south, and along the south side of Montalk Highway is a mix of residential and commercial uses. As we pointed out, zoning in the area includes A1 residential, J2 commercial, congregate retirement housing, and nursing home hospital. Uh, also, as pointed out, state, state-regulated freshwater wetlands occur on-site along the eastern property line, and are tributary to Little Sea Tuck Creek. The applicant's submission material to the Town of Brookhaven and referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission indicate that the subject property or parcels adjacent to the subject property is the subject of a hazardous materials or spill remediation investigation. With respect to general municipal law considerations, it's the belief of staff that the proposed preserves at East Mariches has been designed to be consistent with the existing character of the area. The proposed buildings will be two and a half stories, consistent with the predominant residential pattern in the area. Along the western property line, uh, adjacent to the airstrip, a large vegetative buffer is to remain to shield adjacent land uses from one another. Zoning is in place in the area to accommodate the concentration of, uh, I'm sorry, the construction of a hospital, congregate care, and a nursing home. With respect to the local comprehensive plan recommendations, it is the belief of staff that the proposed action conforms to the recommendations of Town Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan, done in 1996. Comprehensive Plan specifically designates the parcel for high-density residential. The proposed retirement complex is situated in a location where the health-related infrastructure is proposed to be available and accessible, and as indicated by, as it is indicated by the existing zoning. The subject retirement community is not, however, located within a downtown or a transit-oriented development. The subject site is situated between East Mariches and Eastport downtowns, and is more than a mile from either. The walkability score for the subject parcel is, uh, and project is 23 out of 100. However, Suffolk County bus route, um, S90 passes in front of the subject parcel property, and provides mass transit links to points north, south, east, and west. With regard to Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline considerations, submission material to the commission do not indicate that New York State DEC's swift requirements will be met. It is indicated that stormwater runoff from the Contemplated Preserves at East Mariches development is proposed to be collected and recharged to groundwater via proposed drywells and retention ponds. The applicant should be encouraged to review the Suffolk County Planning Commission publications on the study of man-made ponds in Suffolk County, and mapping, uh, and managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. It is recommended that the applicant incorporate into the proposal where practical design elements contained therein. As mentioned, state-regulated freshwater wetlands occur on-site along the eastern property line, and are tributary to Little Sea Tuck Creek. Most land with limited freshwater wetland vegetation should be flagged in the field, if it hasn't been already, uh, by a qualified expert, should be verified by the appropriate regulatory agency, and depicted on all sketches, plans, and maps for the subject parcel. Um, it wasn't noted whether or not on the conceptual plan, whether or not that land had been flagged and verified. Uh, this is important, because wetland lines do tend to migrate, depending on the, um, elevation of the groundwater table, and it's important to have an accurate location of the ground, of the, of the wetland. of the wetland line. A chromaglass sewage treatment plant is proposed for wastewater discharge. Early review by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and Suffolk County Department of Public Works is warranted, and the petitioner should be directed to contact and begin dialogue as early as possible. No mention of the consideration of energy efficiency is provided in the referral material to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. The applicant should be encouraged to review the Suffolk County Planning Commission guidebook. Little discussion is made in the petition to the town and referred to the commission on public safety and universal design. The roadway across the subject property connecting the airport to land uses to the east creates some concern about illegal dumping, et cetera, on the subject parcel. It is the belief of staff that a Phase 1 environmental site audit is appropriate for the subject parcel moving forward. With the above in mind, Mr. Chairman, the staff is recommending an approval of the site plan for the preserve at East Merritt's with the following comments. The first comment regarding the chromaglass sewage treatment plant indicates that the applicant should begin dialogue with the county Department of Health Services and Suffolk County DPW as early as possible. Second comment relates to the flagging of most land with limit of wetland vegetation. The third comment relates to the hazardous materials that have been noted in the referral, and it is recommended a Phase 1 environmental site audit is appropriate for the subject parcel. Fourth comment is that the applicant should be encouraged to review the commission publication on the study of man-made ponds in Suffolk County. The fifth comment is the applicant should be encouraged to review the commission's publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. Sixth is that the applicant should be directed to contact New York State DOT and Suffolk County DPW to resolve any access and traffic considerations for ingress/egress to New York State Route 27A. Comment seven is that the applicant should be encouraged to review the commission guidebook related to energy efficiency. Comment eight is the applicant should review commission guidelines related to public safety. Nine is the applicant should review commission guidelines related to universal design. Ten is that the final map of the proposed residential community should bear the notation that the retirement community is located within one mile of an airport and therefore may be subject to noise from aircraft flying overhead or nearby. And the eleventh comment is that all residential structures that are erected within the retirement community should be constructed using materials that will reduce interior noise. Those are the recommendations of staff, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. This is a Brookhaven project, so I'd ask Vice Chair Kelly to give us his thoughts on it first.
Andy, thanks very much. I guess we'll have some dialogue on this, but I agree with the staff recommendation. And just two comments, and more for dialogue than anything. Number 10, the proximity to the airport. When the applicant developer goes to sell any of these units, he'll have to conform to the New York State Attorney General offering plan, so he'll have to list his neighbors. I don't know if we need to put the designation of having an airport within a mile if it's an internal requirement, so be it. If that notation needs to be on the final map, that the proximity is within a mile from an airport, so be it. But the applicant will have to list it in his offering plan. So if it's a disclosure that we're concerned about, the applicant will have to disclose who his neighbors are. And two, if there are no public funds in the development of the entire property, I don't know if the applicant's building code requirements change. So I don't know if he's obligated to, or would be obligated to, do anything to reduce interior noise other than what he would have to do to sell these units. You know, so I don't know if he's obligated to do it. So like you point out, he should definitely consider it. You know, so if anything, I would just maybe make that change, that the structures the applicant should consider sound attenuating materials in his construction. Other than that, nice review. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, any other thoughts? Christian Kaufman?
Excuse me. Regarding number 11 of Mr. Kelly's comments, the FAA has some construction recommendations regarding construction near airports and things like that. They're not mandatory, but they are very, very useful. A lot of office parks right now use them. For example, Ithaca, New York, there were some places in Switzerland which are located in airports. So the FAA regulations, it might be something just to refer to. Again, not mandatory or anything like that. It's just something to point out.
Good.
Mr. Shaw, trans, you have anything? No? Okay. Mr. Very.
A couple of things. From the plan, it looks like the units have garages on the first floor and there are elevated duplexes. Is that true? Just from looking at the plan?
I'm sorry. You were saying?
Looking at the plan, with all the staircases, it looks like the ground floor is a garage with the residential above it. Is that true? Because we don't have enough information to tell.
We didn't get detail sheets on the structures.
Parking was adequate use. Parking was in accordance with the code.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the parking. I'm talking about the fact that this is retired senior housing. And it looks to me like almost all the units are elevated and require stairways. So I'm wondering if there are internal elevators because it doesn't look like it's designed for senior clientele. So I just kind of, you know, sort of stress what you're talking about, handicap accessibility, because it doesn't look like this really accommodates people aging in place. And so I have a little bit of concern with that, but would just make a comment that maybe they should consider aging in place issues.
Do we put in a comment on the universal design, Andy? It's in there, isn't it?
I believe it is.
You may want to call out specifically, you know, access issues or something like that, even that. I mean, you know, they're not necessarily, I mean, they are multiple, was it two and a half stories, if I remember right? So, yeah, they're townhomes, so they're made to be, you know, multi-story. And obviously, some folks that works for and some it doesn't, but that's... What?
Number nine.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, but I would... Yeah. No, no, no. I'm not opposed to parking. I'm just concerned that it's not really designed for an aging clientele. But it's a retirement. So I just wanted, so I wanted to sort of stress if we could even put more emphasis because the lack of handicap accessibility and the lack of, you know, living in place is sort of evident in the design. And the other thing is for the pedestrian access, three-quarters of it, you know, the intent is for everybody to walk across the street and then there's a sidewalk, but there are hunks that don't have that access to sidewalk. The middle section and the last group on the bottom left. So again, if people are accessing the public facilities, I think a safe pedestrian access route for all the units should be considered. So I would add a note about safe pedestrian accessibility for all the units.
We're, I'm sorry, I don't even see what the issue is. The other thing is, again, we always need to be very careful about getting too into the site plan, you know. Behold, we're not a second planning board thing. Obviously, if there's regional concerns, we should, you know, make note of them. But where is the, where is the, where is the community facility, Andy?
John Carter, design?
Right below the pond, right?
Okay, so there's not much in the way of things there now. Across the street, there is that strip shopping center that's off to the, just on the bottom left of Montauk Highway.
I believe what Glenn was suggesting was that there would be safe pedestrian access within the facility. Is that right, Glenn?
Right.
To get to Montauk Highway, right?
No, I was talking more about internal...
Internal circulation with regard to that facility or the community center or whatever.
I mean, is there a bus route? Because if so, there should also be a continuation to the bus route, too. Because right now, there isn't any link.
Well, there isn't. It's hard to...
So you're looking for a comment that says something to the effect of safe pedestrian access, safe pedestrian access...
Well, I would just say, you know, public safety, as we talk about public safety, which is number eight, as Christian Shaw just pointed out, certainly our standards there include safe pedestrian access. So, I mean, saying something like, including in number eight, you know, including pedestrian access, you know, safe pedestrian access is fine, because it's actually included in the public safety guidelines generally. So I don't think that, I don't think that's an issue. Does that make sense, Glenn? I mean, it's already in number eight, because that's why I have to...
No, it just...
But it just, if you want to highlight it, I don't think that's...
Yeah, I would highlight it because it's something that...
Including safe pedestrian access internal, you know, within the community. And that would just be adding on a few words at the end of comment number eight. Any objection to that? Seeing none. All right. The other thing was with regard to universal design, which is number nine. Again, it's in the universal design guidelines that the commission has. But, you know, to some degree, you know, a developer will make, the development has to make it, and people will either decide to be there or not be there depending upon whether, you know, there's too many stairs or not. So, you know, I don't know that we need to say anything other than what's already there with regard to the universal design, unless anyone else feels strongly about that. All right, seeing none. With regard to, now, Christian Kelly had suggested that we altered maybe 10 and 11. 10 is the map notation, and I think what Mike was saying, Andy, is, you know, it's required to be on there. Of course, you know, I guess we can have it on there. But what's the requirement regarding whether, what, whether it should be on the final map or not?
It's an advisory comment to, you know, good management practices to advise people of what they're going to be buying. If it's required on the offering plan, you know, it's a buyer beware world. So if somebody doesn't read the offering plan, then they're subject to their own folly. This was just a commentary that planning staff recommends that be put on the map. It's only recommendation.
Right. Okay. Seems like there's no objection to that. And then the last thing, I think, was simply the number 11, which is that the applicant should consider constructing residential structures using materials and techniques that reduce interior noise levels with regard to the HUD recommendations. I think Commissioner Kaufman suggested also the FAA recommendations. You know, any objection to adding that or changing in that way? Seeing none, we'll make that change. You have that, Andy?
Yes.
So it's considered doing it. You did mention HUD already, mentioned the FAA guidelines, and then we're done with that. All right?
Yes.
So we changed comment eight to call out pedestrian safety, and we're changing comment 11 a little bit, as we just discussed.
10 is staying as it is or we're dropping?
No, 10 says this. Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion by Vice Chair Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Kaufman. All in favor, please raise your hand. For approval as amended. Three, four, twelve, nothing. Thank you. The next item is the 495 Holdings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the next referral is the application of 495 Holdings LLC. This is referred to us from the town of Brookhaven. Jurisdiction for the commission is that subject property is adjacent to Long Island Expressway and New York State Route 495. The applicant is petitioning the Brookhaven Town Board for a change of zone from light industrial to commercial recreation to permit the construction of 274,745 square feet of indoor and outdoor sports stadiums, restaurants, sports retail, and medical office on 26.6 acres of land in the Am领 of Oldsville. A town board special permit for indoor and outdoor sports stadium and planning board special permit for accessory restaurant use will also be required prior to final approval. The petitioner's EAF indicates that the proposed athletic complex will also require zoning variances for lot area, landscape area, minimum front yard landscape, and front yard buffer. Referral materials to the Suffolk County Planning Commission indicate that stormwater runoff generated on-site will be fully accommodated on-site in subsurface leaching pools and drywall structures. Submission materials to the commission indicate that a New York State DEC SWIP requirements will be met. The application material indicates that the development has been designed to conform to requirements of the Suffolk County Sanitary Code, Article 6. Sewage treatment is proposed via on-site sanitary systems. Systems locations are not identified on the conceptual site plan. Across Morris Avenue to the east is a Suffolk County Water Authority well field. Let me go through the slides now. Okay, so up on the screen is the subject property in the center of the slide. It's outlined in red. You can see the subject property is predominantly wooded. There is an encroachment from the west from Motorola. The parking field encroaches into the subject property, as well as there's a single-family residence that is in the top northeast corner of the property, and that's connected to Morris Avenue, which is the north-south road on the east side of the subject boundaries. Next slide, John. Zooming in a little bit, you can see the subject property. The north side of the subject property has a LIPA, Wilco, or whoever the subsequent agency will be. There's a power line strip running along the north side which buffers the subject property from the typical residential neighborhood there. You can see the encroachment on the west. And the bottom right southeast corner of the subject property is adjacent to a nursery, Cheap Sam's, Cheap Sam's Nursery. Long Island Expressway is running along the southern property boundary on the bottom of the slide. Next slide. Okay, this is an oblique looking from the south, heading north. You can see the land...
Is the person going into the Motorola parking lot there?
The Motorola parking lot encroaches into the subject property, yes. Next slide. Okay, this is the zoning. You can see the subject property is zoned light industrial and a quarter of light industrial running on either side of the expressway. Just to the east of Morris is A5 zoning, and to the north of the subject property is A1 zoning, I believe, that is. Uh, BE zoning, that's half-acre lot. Okay, we'll go back to this. Okay, subject property in the school district, Satcham School District. Next slide. Okay, and this is the site plan of the subject property. You can see the proposed indoor stadiums on the top. There are proposed outdoor soccer fields on the bottom. The parking wraps around on the south side and then along the west side. You can see that the encroachment has been rectified in this conceptual plan. You can see access going off to the east on Morris Avenue. Okay, I think that's all we can point out for now. Staff did go out to the site. This is the subject property. John, help me out here. This is looking back east. This is looking east at the corner of Morris Avenue and the North Service Road. There's a Gulf Station over there, if you're familiar with that. Cheap Sam's is closer to me as you move west on the roadway. Next slide. Now, this is turning around, looking west along the North Service Road of the expressway. There's a sign in the back that identifies the Cheap Sam's, and this is the access into the Gulf Station. Okay, this is the subject property. Basically, get an idea of what it looks like from Montauk Highway? Up from Morris. My apologies, from Morris. Next slide. Okay, and this is what Morris Avenue looks like running pretty much south. And this is turning around, looking at Morris, heading back the other way. North, the subject property is on the left side of the screen. This is what the power line quote "buffer" looks like. To the right would be the single-family development, and to the left of the slide is the subject property. This is the, what the development to the north of the property looks like. It's your typical single-family neighborhood. It's, I would guess, vintage 70s, looking from the, from the style of houses. Next slide. Okay, so those are all the slides. And as you saw from the slides, the subject property has frontage on Expressway Drive North, which is the North Service Road of the Long Island Expressway, which is New York State Route 495. Access is proposed via an unsignalized right turn only ingress/egress. Access is also proposed via a southbound entrance only from Morris Avenue. Okay. In terms of our staff analysis and the general municipal law considerations, it is the belief of staff... of staff that the proposed sports complex has been designed to be consistent with the existing character of the community. Structures are limited to three stories, consistent in height to buildings to the west, and residential areas to the north are buffered by an existing planting buffer along the, uh, WILCO right-of-way. The local comprehensive plan recommendations, it is the belief of staff that the proposed action conforms to the recommendations of the Town of Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan. The plan recommends commercial land use for the subject parcel. It is noted that the subject parcel is approximately three acres short of the minimum lot size for the proposed use within the requested zoning district of commercial recreation. Section 85202 of the Brookhaven zoning law indicates that the minimum lot area for all as-of-right uses in the CR district is three acres, with the exception of the town board special permit for indoor and outdoor sports stadiums and restaurants. The minimum lot area is 30 acres for these uses. The subject parcel is approximately 27 acres. The petitioner submitted that the 1996 Comprehensive Plan cites the limited recreational resources in the town and the fact that future growth of such resources is severely limited by the Central Pine Barrens legislation and regulations, particularly vegetative clearing restrictions. The subject parcel is not subject to these restrictions. South County Planning Commission staff investigated the availability of vacant parcels within the Town of Brookhaven, 30 acres or greater, on a county or state road, and determined, and determined that 17 parcels existed, and that's what that slide was, if you want to go back to that. Uh, that's it. So, what we did was, we took the parabeters out of the proposed, um, CR ordinance for the area, and we took, took the, um, location criteria, and I asked our cartography unit if they could plot in the Town of Brookhaven all 30-acre parcels that are on state or county roads that met the criteria. We did come up with 17 parcels. The majority of those parcels, um, were in the Central Pine Barrens and were subject to review and clearing restrictions. So, of all 17 parcels, only four are not within the Pine Barrens and are not subject to review by the Central Pine Barrens Commission, or they're clearing restrictions. Those properties are located along Horse Block Road, County Road 16, south of the LIE. I, I can't point to them, but in the south, I'm sorry, in the bottom-left corner of the slide up there, you can see a bunch of parcels over there. Those are the parcels that are not in the Pine Barrens and south of the LIE that are, um, not constrained. However, uh, this area is characterized as being above hydrogeologic management zones three and six, and hydrogeologic zones are more sensitive zones in terms of land use and what wastewater discharge management than the subject property itself. The petitioner's also submit that the town in 2000, in 2012 prepared the Town of Brookhaven Athletic Fields Assessment and shared school district study, in which the calling out of the need for additional athletic facilities within the town was highlighted. There remains a consideration that other as-of-right uses may remain as residual permitted uses should the zone change be approved by the Brookhaven Town Board, but the sports stadium special permit is never executed and the stadium's not built. Indoor amusement establishments and miniature golf courses are among the more intense as-of-right uses that would still be allowed to be filed, uh, as a site plan, um, where under the current zoning L1, these uses are not committed as-of-right. Other town board special permits that could be, uh, consideration if the CR zoning were in place but the sports stadium's not constructed include, but not limit, but are not limited to a golf course, a zoo game, a zoo or a game farm, or outdoor racetrack, or a water park. It's the opinion of staff that any use or conservation, I'm sorry, use, covenants, and restrictions may be warranted on the change of zone approval by the town board. With regard to South County Planning Commission guideline considerations, submission materials to the commission indicate that New York State DEC SWIP requirements will be met. The location of the South County Water Authority well field to the east of the subject property is a factor in review of the project. I should point that out, and I failed to mention that. Across Morris Avenue, and if you see where Cheap Sam's is, across Morris to the right, there is a, uh, a vegetated piece of property with a small clearing in the middle. I can't get to, it's right there. So, it's there. Oop, almost happened. Okay, so that is the South County Water Authority well field. We did reach out to the Water Authority, and they did not have any concerns about the location of the project with regard to their, um, facility. Staff does believe, though, that early review by the Department of Health Services is warranted, and the petitioner should be directed to contact and begin dialogue with Department of Health Services as early as possible. There's no mention of the consideration of energy efficiency in the referral materials to the South County Planning Commission, and there's little discussion is made in the petition to the town and refer to the Commission on Public Safety and Universal Design. Will be above in, uh, in mind, Mr. Chairman, the staff is recommending an approval of the change of zone for 495 Holding LLC from Light Industrial One District, L1, to Commercial Recreation, CR, uh, with the following comments. I should mention that this approval would also carry through to the special permit, and I will, uh, amend that line to read the approval of change of zone and special permit for 495 Holding. And the comments are, Mr. Chairman, one, that the petitioner should be directed to contact and begin dialogue with the South County Department of Health Services as soon as possible. Two, the petitioner should be directed to contact and begin dialogue with New York State DOT as soon as possible to discuss access and traffic considerations. Third comment is that the, uh, petitioner should be encouraged to review the Planning Commission publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. Fourth comment is, uh, to review the commission guideline, guidebook particularly related to energy efficiency. Fifth comment is that petitioner should review commission guidelines related to public safety. And sixth, that the petitioner should review commission guidelines related to universal design. Those are the recommendations of staff.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate that. Um, you had mentioned one other thing that I didn't see in the comments, just wanted to see whether you wanted to put one in the comment, which is whether the town board should consider some kind of limitations with regard to, um, other uses.
Yeah, the staff did look at that, and that is a, um, is a concern that, well, we don't know how strong of a concern that is, is that if they get the change of zone approval and they get the special permit approval, that if they don't, uh, perfect the special permit, that the, that the zone change is still in place, and that there are as-of-right uses that would go along with the zone change. Um, staff was not, even though we, we saw some of those uses might be intense uses, we debated internally whether or not we should put a comment on that and left that up to the commission to deliberate and decide. Uh, so the issue is, is that if there is a zone change and the special permit is not perfected, that there are other as-of-right uses on that new zoning category that may or may not raise concerns.
All right. Thank you, we can take that into consideration. Uh, again, another Brookhaven project, so Vice Chair Kelly, let you start on.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Andy. I consider this a real exciting application on a number of fronts, but most importantly, having four kids and traveling up and down the east coast, uh, to different sports tournaments, uh, it would be nice to have another venue in our backyard, so, um, the application makes a lot of sense, and the review makes a lot of sense. So, after dialogue, I would make the motion to, uh, to approve as recommended by staff.
Other thoughts, Commissioner Finn?
Can I second that motion, or, uh?
Yeah.
We'll rule that out. Okay, um, just, I can echo that, because my son, nothing more frustrating, to, to drive to Pennsylvania to play another Long Island team in a tournament. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it is frustrating, but just from a procedural standpoint, Andy, is it, you think is a need for us to put one and two on this, and, and we see this continually? In order to get tests go on this project, they're going to have to meet with South County Health Department, and they're going to have to meet with the DOT, so, kind of telling them to do something that they, they're required to do, I don't know how that, um, is, is that beneficial for us to call it out?
You know, it, it is, um, it is obviously part of the, uh, approval process of the, of the applicant. Um, there's a lot of advisory comments that we put on as a reminder to, uh, staff. Maybe the commission isn't aware, but, um, we think that the towns are very sophisticated. However, they have rollover in staff just as much, if not more, than, than the county does, and they do have entry-level planners and mid-level planners looking at this kind of stuff. We'd like to remind them of the stuff that they should have on their checklist, anyway. Is it absolutely necessary? No, they cannot get a final approval without it. However, um, you know, sometimes we, we like to point out that the commission is aware of these issues, and while we don't have the jurisdiction, we do want to remind people that they do need to go to these other agencies. It is certainly at the discretion of the, of the commission if you want to put those reminders in.
Yeah, that's the one thing. We, we used to not include as conditions things that were required, uh, and we moved them more to comments as reminders, and I don't know that there's much harm in having it as a reminder. It's not, like you said, John, not going to hurt anything, so, uh, it certainly shouldn't be a condition, and in the past, or whatever we call them, modifications. Um, in the past, we had, actually had that as modifications. I think we dropped all that, and now, no longer, we consider that as a modification, so, anyway. Uh, Commissioner Kaufman?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Kelly's and Commissioner Finn's comments about the, uh, need for the, uh, sports fields. I think that they're very, very important. In another context, I know that the county is under immense pressure, wherever possible, to put in these types of, uh, sports facilities for the kids in the area. Uh, whenever the county acquires land, uh, that question comes up, and depending upon the funding source that is used, sometimes, uh, the land is made available. I also note for the record that, uh, the station fields are right nearby, and they are so overcrowded, it's not funny. Uh, the need is desperate for this kind of facility, even if it is a paying facility as opposed to a, uh, public facility. If you build it, they will come, in my opinion. Uh, the only caveat I have on this one is, I don't like to see the loss of, uh, light industrial land, especially along a, uh, major arterial, but so be it. You know, the applicant is allowed to, you know, apply for what he wants, and this is a, a good application, in my opinion.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Berry?
Um, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Um, as part of the EAF, was a traffic study done, and how high is the building?
The traffic study was done, and I believe the building is limited to three stories, which is fifteen... I think it's 45 or 50 feet, I'm not sure. I can get back to you on that exactly.
And the traffic study showed it was fine? Is the level of service is okay?
Well, there was a traffic sur- survey submit, uh, sorry, traffic study submitted, and it is being reviewed by DPDW at the moment. Um, the traffic study indicates that the mitigations, any mitigations proposed will, uh, will mitigate any, uh, any congestion caused by the project. That is still under review.
With regard to the, um, um, the, the height, I would just note that the Motorola, which is directly next door, has got to be at least four or five stories. I don't know how much it is.
No, it's about three.
Is it three? It's at least that. And of course, as you go further down the highway, the expressway, there's, you know, there goes.
The board wasn't balanced high.
That's right. So, there goes tennis. So, Gershwin's tennis server's out, so, uh...
So, the, um, the elevation of those properties is above the elevation of the LIE, so those buildings look a lot taller than they really, than they are when you look at them at grade.
But I, but suffice to say, certainly Motorola's at least as high as three stories.
Yes.
Um, the, my comment, again, relates back to traffic, um, and transportation. Um, a couple of suggestions, that Little Right-of-Way isn't linked to the facility, but it looks like a dense neighborhood, so I would suggest pedestrian and bike access, um, be incorporated, and then people can just come in without having to drive.
Oh, your property?
No, it's not, it's a right-of-way.
Where's the right-of-way, I'm sorry?
The side path.
Down here. There's a little street there that lets way to the property.
Is this the property, Brian? Yeah.
There is a, um, there is a stub street that, that connects it to the property. It would have to tra- traverse the power line easement, but, um, there is, there is an opportunity to create a pedestrian connection.
That's only applied on grades.
Um, the other thing is to incorporate bike parking, because if there's a safe way of getting there, um, it's obviously a use that would benefit from that. And the other thing is, again, the ped, access from the parking, the use of the circle right in front of the building isn't really a safe environment for pedestrians, because the drivers are looking backwards when they're driving around the circle, um, and you're going to be getting a lot of people, a lot of young people, so I'm a little bit concerned about the pedestrian access from the parking area into the building, and, uh, maybe when you're looking at public safety, you might want to call out that, um, because it, to me, it looks like you could have some unsafe conditions right there.
Yeah, I would note, this, this is not site plan, but it is, if we're going to, if we have concerns about the, you know, pedestrian access, it is fine to call it out now, because that can impact site plan. We've seen that, obviously, before, where they sort of will change things, uh, based upon our recommendations. So, so Andy, maybe what you can do is just, again, in public safety, note, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic and the need for pedestrian safety. I know that, uh, you know, having been involved in, uh, as, as some of the folks, maybe going to soccer games, it can be often a nightmare with all the little kids running around and all that stuff, and, um, and, and you just know that it's an accident waiting to happen sometimes, so, um, I think that may be a good, at least a comment, I mean, you know, adding it on to the comment that's already there.
We'll then comment five.
All right, no objections to that, I assume? Yeah. Um, all right. Uh, well, then the other, all the other one was, we're kind of suggesting about bike and, um, uh, pedestrian access. Um, I don't know, staff, any thoughts on that?
Well, as a, as a, I think it's a good suggestion, frankly, and, um, as an advisory comment, um, the Town of Brookhaven can look at it, discuss it with the community, and see if it's something that is palatable as they move the application forward.
Hey, yeah, Michael?
I'm catching something with this bike access and this pedestrian access. This would be from the properties to the north, uh, moving, moving south into the property?
Yes, theoretically, this...
Across the LIPA right-of-way.
Yes, this facility is going to service most of the residential areas to the north. There's a stub street, I can't, wish I could show you.
Yeah, but as Michael pointed out, there is the LIPA right-of-way, or...
It's not a right-of-way, it's owned by LIPA, it's called a right-of-way.
Right, it's a...
The stub street is right there.
Are there lines there?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a lane.
Can you go to the area, Andy, just verify that there are high-tension lines going across there, in which case...
There's a photo of it.
Was it, was there a photo?
They usually allow people to have access, but not park.
We don't have, we don't have, um, uh, the privilege of looking at the, of the deed, but it, it may be just an access easement across the property, and it may not be a, um, owned strip by, uh, the power authority, so that, I think it's a logical suggestion whether or not it can be accommodated, uh, should be looked at.
They can look into, I don't think there's any issue with us having to look into it. I mean, there might be a lot of issues involved, but...
I, I just remember when I was involved with LIPA, I mean, there was like no way you were letting people have access to that, in this area. Um, I would say that there couldn't have been some exist, you know, pre-existing thing that maybe, you know, way back when was done that would allow access, but, you know, that's just dangerous.
If I could, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, go ahead, Andy.
I was just going to say that, um, the Department of Planning was involved in a $2 million grant, uh, application, which is now almost pushed up to 20 million, a rails-to-trails project, where we can, we are in the process of converting an abandoned rail line, uh, which was given to, over to the power authority, and, uh, we now have an easement secured to provide a pedestrian and bicycle pathway, rails-to-trails, so it's not impossible to get the easement across the power line.
Right, it's less of an issue, it's harder to issue when it's actually being used, but there are, there certainly are, and there's one in three villages, a bike trail that is sometimes traversed, some of the stuff, so it's not impossible, but, um, Commissioner Finn, you ready to say something?
No.
Okay, Commissioner?
I was just going to say that I had talked to LIPA on a different project, and they were actually open to having access, they just didn't want parking on their facility, so I think there is some leeway there.
Okay, so a comment suggesting that they explore pedestrian and bike access to the property. Yes. Oh, okay. I guess, any objection to that? Seeing none. All right, so, um, we have the staff report, and, uh, the only addition, I believe, is just the, or, two additions. One, focusing in on the pedestrian safety aspect with regard to the public safety comment, and then adding a comment with regard to, uh, pedestrian and, uh, bike access to the subject property. All right? Anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion by Commissioner Acutella, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's for approval as amended. Any objections? Any extensions? No, so that's...
Twelve, zero.
Uh, you had them spoke. Uh, we have two items of business left. Um, one is the, uh, report of the nominating committee, and the second is, I just want to give John Wheeler, just five minutes to...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, there is one more right of the...
Oh, yeah. I was getting ahead of myself. Uh, Freedom's Point Assisted Living, yes, okay. Go for it, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the application is Freedom's Point Assisted Living. This is referred to us from the town of Huntington. Jurisdiction for the commission is that the subject property is within one mile of Alphor, and that it is within 500 feet of South County... heliport, and that it is within 500 feet of Suffolk County land. The applicants are seeking site plan approval from the town of Huntington Planning Board for development of a 111 assisted unit living facility and associated site developments. The subject parcel is located on the south side of Middleville Road, which is a town road, in the hamlet of Northport. The intended site is a 10-acre section controlled by the project sponsor situated at the northeast corner of the USA Northport Veterans Hospital. Total acreage for the hospital is approximately 300 acres. The proposed Freedom's Point Assisted Living facility is intended to consist of 111 units in a three-story, 113,343 square foot building. Disturbance on site is limited to 4.5 acres of the 10.1 acre site. Seven existing residential units on the grounds will be rehabilitated. Ninety-five parking stalls are provided and more than meet the town code requirement, the 45 all-street parking stalls. Healing gardens are proposed as an amenity to the building. Let me just go through the slides quickly. This is the Veterans Hospital property in Northport. The subject site is the northeast corner, very hard to point out without the pointer. It's not going to work. But it is at the bend of the road, up there, there's a horizontal road, Middleville Road, and you can see that bend, and the subject property is just below the bend. Next slide, John. All right, a little closer, it's in the top right, almost middle of the property. You can see the property line where it pulls away from the road at that curve there. The disturbance right there is a Suffolk County Water Authority wellfield. About that, next slide. Okay, that's a little better. So Middleville Road is the curved road that runs at the top part of the slide. You can see the elevated water storage tank of Suffolk County Water Authority property, and just below that, in that wooded area, between that and the rank of houses or row of houses there, is the subject site of 10 acres, and it's roughly that wooded area. Next slide, John. Okay, this is the zoning for the subject property. Property is zoned R80, residential 80, but the entire 300 acres has been in the control of the VA hospital for quite a long time. Next slide. Okay, subject site in the school district, next slide. This is the site design. You can see, top left corner is where Middleville Road is, that's that sneaky road on the property. What they're going to do is they're going to come around and take access off of Middleville Road and come back again, so you can see on the bottom of the slide where the faint outline of those houses are, is the actual access. They're going to create an access point going into the woods, and then construct the first part of the assisted living facility. Next slide. Okay, so we went out there. This is one of the existing buildings that are going to be rehabbed. They are inhabited at the moment, they're a little bit rundown. You can't see it, but the conservatory off to the east side there, the solarium or whatever it is, all those windows have been blown out, and there's a plastic flapping. So they are in a rundown state, next slide. I was just looking up the access road a little bit, next slide. Okay, this is trying to get a view of the development site. To the right would be where the proposed assisted living facility would be, and to the left are where the existing dwellings are. This is the subject property, again, looking north, trying to get a shot at the elevated water storage tank and the Water Authority property, which is the buffer between this property and then Middleville Road and then any dwellings to the north. This, again, is another shot. You can see the dwellings to be rehabbed on the left side of the slide. On the right side of the slide is the construction site. This is the construction site. We finally got a shot of the elevated water storage tower, which is north of the development site, and the Water Authority property, and that tower would be part of the buffer that would conceal this development from the roadway and any residences to the north. This is a quick shot, as we were getting out of there, of the golf course. I thought that there'd be some members of the commission that would chastise us if we didn't take a photo of the golf course. We tried to get a shot of the golf course as we were leaving. You can see, though, in the background, the VA hospital has their own water storage tank and their own water supply system. They also have a sewage treatment system that is on site. Next slide. And that's it. Okay, so getting back to the staff report, the application materials indicate that the development will have a subsurface liquid, will have subsurface liquid waste in the form of sewage. No onsite sewage treatment facility is indicated on the site plan, and no location for a pump station is indicated on the site plan either. Waste water discharge will have to be designed to conform to the requirements of Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article 6, promulgated by the Department of Health Services, or be connected to a sewage treatment facility. The subject site is frontage on Liberty Lane and Internal Street within the VA hospital grounds that has a curb cut to Middleville Road. The proposed assisted living facility will have two points of access to Liberty Lane. The easternmost access will be for emergency purposes only, and it has a gated entrance. The subject site is presently undeveloped and primarily wooded. The existing natural vegetation of the subject site is characterized as pine oak forest. Similar woodland exists on public and private lands surrounding the site, particularly to the south and east. State-regulated freshwater wetlands are located to the west within the golf course and a small pocket to the south. I don't think we have the wetland map there, but the standing water within the golf course has now been mapped by DEC and its regulated wetland. With regard to staff analysis, general municipal law considerations, it is believed to the staff that the proposed Freedom Point Assisted Living facility has been designed to be consistent with the existing character of the VA hospital grounds and the adjacent community. The proposed buildings will be buffered from residential development to the north by facilities of Suffolk County Water Authority and land of the town of Huntington. The residential area is located across from Middleville Road. So go to the other, back out to the other area, yeah. So you can see now, the development site is up in that top right-hand corner of the project site outlined in red. You've got the Water Authority property now that you can see, and along the eastern boundary of the right side of the subject property is all that open space, which is owned by the town of Huntington, and that buffers the uses and the residences to the east and to the north where the development is going to be. Again, you have Middleville Road, and you have the Suffolk County Water Authority property. Okay, in terms of the local comprehensive plan, it's believed to the staff that the proposed action conforms to the recommendations of the town of Huntington Comprehensive Plan. The proposed assisted living facility is situated in a location where the existing health-related infrastructure is available and accessible. With regard to Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline considerations, submission material to the commission did not indicate that New York State DEC SWIP and Speedy's requirements will be met. The location of the Water Authority wellfield adjacent to the subject property is a factor in the review of the project. Early review by the Department of Health Services is warranted, and the petitioner should be directed to contact and get dialogue with the Department of Health Services. Staff did reach out to the Water Authority, they responded to us that they had no concerns with the proposed assisted living facility, and it's not in their zone of capture for their wellfield. Waste water treatment and disposal issues should be reviewed with Suffolk County Department of Health Services and Suffolk County Department of Works as early as possible. Again, now we're dealing with the federal government, we don't know where their waste water is going, so we thought that a comment to this effect would be relevant as the staff reviewed that.
I believe it's going to the NSA, I think.
No mention of the consideration of energy efficiency is provided in the referral material either. Little discussion is made in the petition to the town and refer to the Commission on Public Safety and Universal Design. It's staff recommendation to the commission that the subject application be approved with the following comments. First comment, the applicant should be directed in contact, directed to contact and get dialogue with the Department of Health Services as early as possible. Second being that the applicant should be encouraged to review the commission's publication on managing stormwater. Third comment being that the applicant should be encouraged to review the commission's guidebook on energy efficiency. And fourth, the applicant should review Planning Commission guidelines particularly related to public safety and universal design, and staff will give the commission the one on universal design. I think that the VA building assisted living facility might be cognizant of universal design.
I think that's probably a fair point. All right. Thank you, Andy. This is Huntington Project Commissioner Casey.
I just had a quick question. Is the heliport on the grounds of the VA?
Yes, the heliport's on the grounds of the VA.
And the facility that's being built, is it for just the use of VA, of the VA? You said it's a private company that's building it, but I assume that it's for the use of the VA.
We have no information on who will be using the facility, but we do know that the facility being built on VA grounds, and...
They transfer the property to somebody else, so it is assumed that it's going to be used by the VA?
It is assumed, yes.
I think it's a very good project, I'm sure there's a big need for it, especially with the influx of veterans that we now have on Long Island and an aging veteran population that's in need of a facility such as this. I support the project, and thank you for your work on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Casey. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt the commission report as approval?
One.
Oh, sorry. Glenn, you...
Yeah. One more comment.
Oh, come, yeah, that's right.
I would just want to add to where you're talking about universal design, that they incorporate an accessible pedestrian route linking the two structures, because there is an amenity in the design now.
Without objection, we'll put that in. Andy, is this, is this federally owned land?
Yes.
So is this even a zoning matter at this point?
Well, the federal government has the option to work with the local municipality and provide plans and subject themselves to the review.
Is this in the jurisdiction for us to weigh in on this, or...
To the extent that it is referred by the town of Huntington to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and they indicate that it's a 239 review, we have the jurisdiction.
Okay, very good. All right, so we have the edit regarding, or the addition regarding pedestrian access between the new building and the old building. No objection on that. Anything else, any other comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt as amended by Commissioner Casey, second by Vice Chair Kelly. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, or any extensions, none, so it's 12 to zero. Now, as I indicated, we have two things left. One, the nominating committee report. Second, I want to give John five minutes just to go through the geothermal code, which is in your packet, just wanted to highlight that. So why don't we do the nominating committee, I think it'll just take a minute or two, so why don't we thank Commissioner Gabrielson, Commissioner Gershwin, and Commissioner Shartrane for serving on the nominating committee and rules committee, and the chair, Mr. Gabrielson, can report.
Okay, we haven't had any suggestions on rule changes, so we recommend keeping the rules as is. And as far as recommending for our positions, Mike Kaufman, I'm sorry, we had eliminated you because you can't run for three positions, but...
I want to be dog catcher.
But anyway, we'd like to recommend a colon for our chair again, and also Adrian Esposito and Mike Kelly as the vice chairs.
Appreciate that, and as you indicated, there were no rule suggestions, and I think we circulated it now twice to everyone, so... Tom, unless there's anything to you, or Sarah, to you, the staff, to you, changes, we can obviously bring them up in February, but it sounds like everyone seems happy with the rules as they are. Thank you, Carl, Kevin, Matt, for serving on the nominating committee, appreciate your work.
Thanks, Michael.
And so the way this works is, those who become the official nominations next month in our meeting in February, anyone who wishes to nominate someone else or themselves for a position can still do that, will vote in our February meeting for our officers for 2014. The last thing, any questions? No.
I just have one question. Is, are they equal vice chairs, or is there a first vice chair? Is Mr. Kelly secondary to Ms. Esposito? Just because I think that point is...
Yeah, well, technically, we do have a first vice chair and a second vice chair.
That's probably well deserved, then expected.
I respect that Michael would be the second one. Is that the nominating, is that accurate? Okay. All right, let's just finish up with John, just five minutes you have in your packet, it's right in front of you, the geothermal code, it's four pages long. Just wanted to give John a few moments to go through it, and certainly, John Reiner, if you had any, if anyone has comments or questions they can ask, you're here as well for that review. But let's just take a few minutes here at the end here. Good job.
Okay, great. Great, thank you, thank you, Chair. I'll try to keep this very brief, because we all have the packets in front of you. Just the general picture, the idea here, this was based, I believe, when Brookhaven adopted this geothermal code, it actually stemmed from the template that this commission had worked on with the solar, correct, Haven?
Yeah.
And so this is really just our effort to continue the work as far as, as far as the work that was done on the solar, the work that continues to be done on the wind turbines. And the idea is that Brookhaven now does have legislation, similar, very similar to this, on the books, and there will be other towns codifying geothermal systems, and our attempt here is to come up with a template that's meaningful, and therefore, we worked with the Long Island Geo Group, which are mostly experts, installers, engineers, hydrogeologists. And we have met with Julio Bertoli and Arthur Gerheiser at Brookhaven and discussed this, and they were fine with our recommendations, they may or may not update their code. And, can you all hear me okay? Okay, sorry. And so we are in, going to continue dialogue with Suffolk County Department of Health Services and with the New York State DEC. Everything in this template code would be in concert with all of the requirements of the DEC and of the Suffolk County Health. We will probably end up referencing their regulations. So the idea here is to, just to offer to towns a template that they may or may not adopt. If they do not adopt it, currently, East Hampton and Southampton do not have anything on their books. If they do not adopt it, we would just present it as an educational tool for their building inspectors and for, and obviously for the public, too. The end game here is that we want to promote geothermal, and in the past, there have been some shoddy installers and people underbidding on their installers, where things are done incorrectly, and therefore, geothermal tends to kind of get a bad name. So the goal here is all about promoting geothermal and trying to simplify it and educate, educate public officials and the community as a whole. So David and I will be working, and with Mike, and Mike has also been helpful, and he's looking into some tax abatements. We will be working to kind of chop this, pedal this around, and meet with the various towns, and get their feeling and their input, and again, working with the Long Island Geo, we will be getting additional input from the DEC and the Suffolk County Health, their comments, and then we will try to pull all that together, and then come back to the commission with the final template for your review and hopefully, hopefully, your approval. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, Matt.
Yes, John, I know that diplomas on Long Island, Suffolk County specifically, have to be licensed and certified, is this going to be incorporated into this?
Yes, I believe so, John, that would be part of this. The goal here is to get properly, if you look at some of the reference approvals, the goal here is to get the proper people doing the installments, because as I said, that's where some of the problems in the past have occurred.
I just have a question for John Reiner. I know you were working on the recommended setbacks. You have a timetable on putting that together?
We can, you know, we can...
Okay. Because I'd like to, if we can, sort of get the ball moving so that next time we all meet in December, we can kind of have the synthesis... Yes, I'm going backwards. In February, we can, you know, have this to a, you know, a place where it can be adopted. We can't, you know, obviously need to have it fully fleshed out, some of those aspects, so.
Dave, just to piggyback on your comment, real quickly, Suffolk County Health Services currently does have their setbacks in the memo of 2012. I imagine, John, I can talk about this, I imagine we would want to work with that, because it's going to be tough to get Suffolk County to change their setbacks, and it probably is not a reason to do so.
Okay, that makes sense. Commissioner Berry?
One, I don't understand why the historic, it's forbidden to be in historic districts, because this is actually a form of climate control that has little impact on appearances, like it would have much less appearance than a traditional air conditioning unit. So I would actually take that out, in fact, and allow it in historic buildings and districts.
It doesn't say that.
It says...
Specifically says on the first page that they're not allowed unless a permit is given, and then it says you can get it within these areas as long as it's reviewed and the permit does exist.
I'll make, I'll make one comment on that, and you guys can work, you guys can work this out offline, but that comes from the, this list of things also was from the wind, where the wind, where it was more, obviously, and solar, it was the same, less, and the wind and solar, there was the aesthetic issue with the historic. So perhaps that is something, again, I don't, we need, don't need to take everyone's time here, but talk about that, maybe that is something that could come out. The others may make some sense, but the other, that one may be able to come out.
Hey, Mr. Esposito, I could just jump in for a second. That is something we would actually like to take out, I don't know why that got left in. We discussed that with Brookhaven. Brookhaven may go ahead and leave that in, but we agree with you, and I think in the next draft, we probably... the next draft, we probably even will take that out, because it really doesn't make any sense in this, in this case.
And the other thing is, number three, is 100 feet from title of freshwater wetland? I would leave it at 100 feet to freshwater wetland, and then maybe have a different recommendation for title or saltwater intrusion.
Sure, let me make a suggestion, those kinds of, you know, specific conversations, let's just have them afterwards, John's here, you know, John, Mike, you guys can meet afterwards anyway on this, but I just want to make sure the commission is aware of what's going on, and understands at a high level of what we're doing. We got the education, thanks to John, presentation on sort of on the high level of what, what geothermal is about, we have the model code here, which is the first, you know, draft of that, and that needs to be touched up over the next few weeks, so you should expect to see this coming back, again, like I said, hopefully for our next meeting, and, you know, it'll be revised a bit, but it's getting there, want everyone to be in the loop on that, so. All right, any other last questions? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Gershewitz.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Vice Chair Gabrielson. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, guys, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
You should go, I mean, if you're going to stay up all night. You should go, and if you're not going to go, I know. Oh, you're kidding me?
I don't want my mind to come out.
Also, if you prefer, go sell those on the stub hub and take your wife on a real vacation.
I'll be in the war.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, hi.
Just so you don't get in trouble.
Yes.
I need to contact, I need, where the chief of health is, when you come on the federal property, you take pictures.
Oh, so you're like, you get arrested.
Well, we stopped, we stopped at the booth and...
Did you tell them you were taking pictures?
I don't think we mentioned it until we were doing the science fiction.
Okay. Yeah, so, thank you very much. The only thing that was wrong about your presentation was there is no curb cut on Middleville Road. The curb cut comes off of our access road right before the, the booth. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, I apologize for...
I just don't want you to get arrested.
I'm a hussler guy, I'm out of that. That one now, I miss, you know. That's where I went with, right. He gets up there, because he's got some problems. He's got that problem, he's right, you're medical, he's just...
Who's are they? I think the floor...
I was watching the picture.
My daughter, if you ever played that party a couple years ago, like drop her off at the door, you know, like suck the fuck out of her.
Yeah, because I don't put them in five.
Okay, I'll let you guys mark it out.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I still think, John, I, when I look at, I'm just talking about the station, the pizza place, the, got to do a, the...
That's a shame.
I mean, it's fine, it's a little hard to...
Yeah, about last one.
No, I was too quick to jump, jumped the gun here.